Good evening and welcome to the August 27th meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call?
Yes, council members Brotman.
Here.
Arpetian.
Here.
Kazakian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Asatian. Here. And because this last weekend, the Vertigo Hills Council Chapter of Scouting America opened its headquarters, new headquarters in the city of Glendale, I've asked Troops 225 to join us in leading the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. Please stand.
Please place your hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation.
Let us begin by acknowledging that we are standing on the indigenous lands of the Gabrielino-Tangbo people. I will now read an excerpt from The Cost of Living by Arundhati Roy. "To love, to be loved, to never forget your own insignificance; to never get used to the unspeakable violence and the vulgar disparity of life around you; to seek joy in the saddest places; to pursue beauty to its lair; to never simplify what is complicated or complicate what is simple; to respect strength, never power; above all, to watch, to try and understand; to never look away, and never, never to forget." May Arundhati Roy's words inspire us today. Thank you.
Thank you. And if the Troops want to just say their names.
James.
Ariane.
And James also taught me the scout handshake over the weekend, and so I'm going to be using that moving forward. So thank you for being here. What's next?
Next is my report. The agenda for the August 27, 2024 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on August 22, 2024 on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Great, who's next?
Next are presentations on appointments. A agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, September 3, 2024 by Assistant City Manager John Tachalian.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I will make this very quick. Next week, we have four consent items. We have four consent items for next week. The first will be a report from Community Services and Parks, seeking approval of a sub-recipient agreement for homeless housing assistance and prevention programs. The next three consent items will be acceptance of grant funds. The first for the Police Department from the state of California for violations associated with distracted driving, vehicle code, bicycle, pedestrian, and DUI-type violations. The next, again, will be acceptance of funds for motorcycle safety education and training program. And the last consent item will be acceptance of funds for the city of Glendale's Open Streets event, which is going to be held on May 31, 2025. We also have three action items. The first item from the City Attorney's Office regarding the nomination process for boards and commissions. The next from community involvement regarding the alfresco dining and private parking areas. And the last item will be from Public Works, seeking an award of a contract for the old police building and civic parking garage stairwell rehabilitation project.
Great, thank you. Before we move forward, our city manager had requested that we pull one of the items from today's agenda, as the staff report needs to be updated.
Yes, please.
Which item is that?
It will be item 4B.
4B, okay. And what's next?
Next is recognition of Christopher Ratavusian's musical achievement.
All right. And accepting the commendation is Christopher and his family, so if I can, whoever's going to be joining Christopher, you can, no, no, you can stay. You can stay. Just a little bit of background on Christopher. Delighted to share that he's an 11-year-old student at Valley View Elementary School, but has recently distinguished himself on the international stage. Christopher has just placed second in the first round of the prestigious international music competition, Music Through the Centuries. This impressive accomplishment has earned him an invitation to compete in the final round, which will take place on July 31 in France. Christopher's dedication to his musical education, coupled with his extraordinary talent, exemplifies the excellence that can be found within our Glendale community. His success not only highlights the cultural richness and diversity of our city, but also serves as an inspiring example to his peers and fellow residents. By showcasing Christopher's success, we can inspire other young talents in our community to pursue their passions and strive for excellence. It would also be a wonderful way to celebrate the support and education provided by Valley View Elementary School and the Glendale Unified School District.
It already happened, and he got second place.
Okay, well, it happened, and he got second place. All right. I'm going to read the commendation, and then Christopher, if you want to say a few words. "In recognition of your remarkable talent and dedication to your musical education, your hard work and early success not only highlights the cultural richness and diversity of our city, but also serve as an inspiration example, inspiring example of our community. On behalf of the city of Glendale, I wish you continued success in your musical endeavors." And as somebody that went to music school for seven years and had to participate and practice at least a couple hours a day, I recognize how much it takes both from the student and also from the family in ensuring that his success is followed through, and here we are today. So, thank you, Christopher. Christopher, if you want to say a few words, tell us a little bit about your trip.
Yes, so we went on July 27 to France. So we had to go to Paris first, and then, then that day, then we had to sleep for that night, that same night we arrived. Then we would go to Strasbourg for the competition, then, and the competition correction, it was, I, it was, the age group was 10 to 12 that I won second place, but still, I think everyone should practice like me, and we should show how good Glendale really is. And, and also, yeah, I did, what should I say? So, yes, I'm a sixth grader at Valley View Elementary, and when I complete this school year, I would, I will go to Rosemont Middle School. And I just want to say, I want to thank my parents for all the dedication and encouragement they've given me to do this. Everyone should, everyone should have hard work despite having talent or not, be goal-oriented, and follow your dreams.
Wow. You're also, Christopher, I'll also say that you're also a fantastic public speaker, and inspirational speaker as well. How many hours a day do you practice?
Like, I usually practice one hour, but still, you should practice, you should, you should.
I should practice.
Even if you, if you want to, if you want to.
What instrument do you play?
Piano.
Piano. So, I think I was your age, and I fell during PE and hurt my hand, and my mom, despite me being hurt, used to make me practice two, three hours a day. And then, my dad took me to the doctor, and we found out that I had fractured my wrist, so my mom felt really, really awful, that she was making me practice with my hand because she thought I was just, like, making excuses not to do it. And so, I recognize how much the family also plays a role in making sure that you're successful in your endeavors, and hopefully, next time around, we're going to get first place. We're always, we're always striving for first place, right?
Yes, if you work hard and follow your dreams.
Yes. All right. Christopher, I'm going to come down, so we can take a photo, and I'm going to give you the commendation and...
So which, so which direction do I face?
I'll come down, and then we'll face the audience, okay?
Oh, okay.
All right. You're awesome.
Thanks. Never stop, give up.
I wonder why.
And on my way back, I learned that the mom used to work for the city?
I still work for the city. I used to work for Aram, the very department of Public Works. Now I'm at the Vertigo Job Center, working with...
You have to, you should be at the...
Currently, since 2009, I'm with the Vertigo Job Center and with the Board, working for the, on the trainings and all the financials of the Vertigo Job Center there.
Thank you, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Christopher, you should come to our meetings more often. I think you bring so much joy and inspiration. So, great job. Awesome, awesome. Yeah, I like this kid. Congratulations to the parents as well, job well done, awesome, and the extended family who are here.
Thank you.
They must be very proud.
All right. Well, if we had a piano here, I'd ask him to play. Oh, do you have something?
We weren't able to receive the file, it was too big.
Okay, all right. Thank you, everyone. All right, what's next?
Next are consent items, including minutes. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed. Item 4B is being pulled and will be moved to September 3 council, to the September 3 council meeting.
Do any of my colleagues want to pull any other? Or do we, do I have a motion to?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
Roll call.
Except 4D, right? 4B. Okay.
Yeah. Christopher.
Roll call.
Council members Brotman.
Yes.
Arpetian.
Yes.
Kazakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Asatian.
Yes. I love that Chris is sitting up front. He keep making me want to smile, so.
Yeah, I'm just joking.
Great. All right, and what's next?
Next are city council and staff comments.
Which one of my colleagues would like to go first?
Well, I will, if nobody else is. Yeah, I wanted to raise again something that I brought up, I don't know, months ago, about an on-demand electric shuttle service. Madam City Clerk, could you just put up that, the link that I sent you, a link to a website that has a little image? Okay, well, it was just really an image of a electric shuttle that's run by a company called Circuit. They partner with cities across the country, many in California, most of them in California. I know that there's 17 communities in California that run this service, including Culver City, Palm Desert, Huntington Beach, Lemert Park, and then there are locations in Texas, Washington, Florida, New York, and other places. They're able to run this service with a relatively low cost per ride, and they can do it in all different ways. It can be, you know, private labeled, so it runs as a kind of a Glendale branded service. And I would like to see if we could agendize, maybe put this on the new business agenda. Yeah, there it is. No, that's not it. That's not it. That's not it. I sent you one thing before that. That's for later. Anyway, let's, I showed the image before. It's kind of a, like a double-sized golf cart-looking thing. It's like, smaller than Metro Micro, bigger than a golf cart. It would run in a designated zone, you know, most likely in our downtown area, connecting the transit center with all the, you know, with the Americana and all the shops on, on brand. And it would run, you know, you take an app, it's similar to the Metro Micro, except that it would pick you up anywhere in the zone, not just at a, at a bus stop, and it would drop you off anywhere. So, I did bring this up before, and I don't know if there was confusion. I thought I got the okay from two of my colleagues to put this on a future agenda, but apparently I did not. So I'm bringing this up again, hoping it'll go on next week's new business agenda, and get support for staff to look into, what are the possibilities for us to introduce this kind of service? You know, we, at one time, talked about a trolley, a fixed trolley, running up and down brand, was going to be very expensive. This would be a much, much, much lower-cost solution that could provide same, some of the same benefits as a trolley in our business district. Now we're getting it. Here, you could see somebody on an app, and that's what it looks like, or at least it's one version, because we could, we could have it look however we want. There's advertising on it, which defrays some of the cost. And anyway, I think enough has been said. So hopefully, I will get my colleague's support for staff to put this on their long list of items to bring back to us at a future date. Thank you.
All right. Who'd like to go next?
I can go next. Well, I usually don't talk about the events that I went to, but there are a few of them that were worthy of mentioning. One was a very large business move to Glendale, the AJR company, that's, they were celebrating their 40th anniversary, as well as launching their new identity, which is called ILO, and Path to Future Logistics, that's what it's called. On Saturday, my wife and I attended the Vertigo Hills Council Chapter's new building opening, and it was a great event. All the scouts that were here today, they were all there, and we had a grand opening for them, which I'm glad that they stayed in Glendale. They were in Glendale for many years, they relocated, they're on Glendale Avenue now. Also, we had another event, Beyond Plastics Vendor Fair at Parches Plaza, Perkins Plaza in Glendale. These are, this was like vendors that came in, and they had alternative material and papers, plates, and utensils of you, what have you, that restaurants can use instead of plastic, was very informative. I picked up so many different packets and information. I picked up so many different packets and information. Hopefully, we can pass that on to some of our, this was the first fair, and hopefully in the future, we will have more, and the restaurants will also participate. More people will participate to understand what their options are instead of plastic. Also went to a wedding. No, I'm just kidding. It was a great wedding, a lot of fun. You know, you need some fun and humor in your life in everything you do. So with that, and I rode my bike this weekend, and I think I broke the record. Went up the Fern Lane to Sports Complex, took the, the dirt road, the dirt path, the up around the hill that ends up into Emerald Isle. And that was a challenge. It was a challenge. And kudos to my wife, because she was with me, and she made it too. So all the way up to Emerald Isle and came down Mountain Avenue. It was an easy way down, but going up that hiking trail, which is a hiking trail and a bike trail, it's, it is a challenge, I gotta tell you. Take a lot of water with you. So with that, Madam Mayor, that's all I have for this week.
Great. Anyone else? Well, aside from the Verdugo Hills Council that I was also at, I think I do want to maybe just do a huddle with staff for the vendor fairs in the future, because we didn't have too many restaurants and eaters that showed up, and so maybe we can just take a look at how we can improve that. The Women's Athletic Club of Glendale also celebrated their 100th anniversary this weekend, and so, and their oldest member is actually 104-years-old, who I had the pleasure of meeting at the event. If you are interested, they have different groups from hiking to various sports that you can be involved in. And then the Army and Bone Marrow also had its annual gala this weekend. The, I do want to note, the Women's Equality Day event, as of this morning, is officially sold out. I think this perhaps may be the fastest sold-out event the city has had. And so, looking at, I've also gotten some requests, as people heard about the event, on how they can support the Commission on the Status of Women, and so if you do have interest, my understanding is there is a way to get funding in that could be earmarked towards the work of the Women's Commission. And if you are still interested in attending, you can still RSVP, but you'll be placed on a waitlist, and then as the date nears, we'll see who may be dropping out, and so if there's room for that. Lastly, I'd like to agendize for us to the, the group that put together the International Kids Festival this past June had approached, noting that they want to do a pumpkin patch, and again, another International Kids Festival next year. I did tell them that we have a process by which they would have to submit some sort of proposal and request. They are a nonprofit, and that would need to come to the council for approval if they want additional, like discounts or partnership or sponsorship. So I'd like to just agendize for us to be able to have that conversation when we do get the final proposal or request then from them. I know that the first time they put this event together, it brought forth thousands to Verdugo Park, and just trying to figure out ways that we can help support and partner with organizations that bring family-friendly events to our city. All right, with that.
Madam Mayor, I would just like to add that the Army and Bone Marrow Registry is an important organization that helps people who need donors, and whether, you know, it's incredible what they've been able to do, but they can always use more people. Just becoming a possible match with someone takes a few seconds. You just have to swab your cheek, and they're able to put you in this registry, and you can potentially save someone's life. It was their 25th anniversary gala. They've registered to date, I think they mentioned about 30,000 potential donors, but there's a possibility to register a lot more. So I've registered. I'm sure my colleagues have as well, and I encourage anyone else watching to do so as well. Thank you.
All right. Next item?
Next item is community event announcements, three minutes, five speaker limit per mayor policy. This item also permits speakers wishing to speak under general oral communication, subject to the three-minute time limit. Discussion is limited to matters not on the agenda. We have five speaker cards. Our first speaker card is by Tony Passarella.
Good evening, councilmen and staff. Tony Passarella. The title of my comment says chaos in the city. Motor vehicles, buses, motorcycles, bicyclists, electric bike riders in the street, on the sidewalk, electric scooters, one-wheel mobility, pedestrians jaywalking, police and fire buzzing through the city, sirens blazing, dog walkers, lost souls in the middle of the street talking to the sky. And this is evidenced by the town hall that, that the Traffic Bureau conducted last Wednesday, and the officer said that 100 citations a month are issued. Well, if that's the case, how many people are violating the law that aren't besighted? 10 times, 20 times, more than that? Very possible. I have a helpful solution to this problem, and it's bicycle safety and patrol. Now, better served would be police units on bicycles responding on bicycles, where they can maneuver around and get in where police cruisers can't and so forth, but also, Suzie, could you put up the photos, please? Just a private security, where they can observe and report, with a two-way communication to dispatch, help with medical emergencies, render first aid, I mean, on and on and on it goes with these. This is a very good idea. Okay, so this is my ask. If this is something that can be agendized, I'm asking one of you to do that, please. Have a rep come and go through the duties, the procedures, give cost, maybe take bids from other companies. So here's the deal. The city's put out millions of dollars for the Fremont Park Restoration Project, for the San Fernando Road Beautification Project, right? And now they're in the process of spending, I don't know how much money. Community development is in the process of putting up microphones to monitor noise in the city. So how about investing in public safety and security? How about that? Personally, I don't feel comfortable, I don't feel safe anymore navigating this city. And I've seen all of these things that I mentioned at the top. I've seen all of these things happen every day. So please consider agendizing that, if possible, one of you, please. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mike Mohill.
My name is Mike Mohill. I have a video to show. This video is taken on Hollywood Boulevard, and it shows you the chaos on Hollywood Boulevard since they installed the bike lanes. You're going to see, there it goes. Hit, hit, hit. I've been to Hollywood Boulevard a couple times since this was taken, and it's a mess. It's a disaster. Is this what's coming to Glendale with bike lanes? No parking? You know, the city of, I brought a video here last week on Culver City, where they do ahead and took their bike lanes and changed it. They spent thousands of dollars. Same thing with Chinatown and San Francisco. Councilmembers, you've received hundreds of letters from residents of Glendale. They even sent me copies of how they are very unhappy of the idea of having bike lanes and removing the traffic lanes within the city of Glendale. We can do better. We don't need bike lanes for the, for the privileged. Only a few, you look around, and you don't see any bike riders, do you? I hardly ever do. Mr. Vartan can tell you that he rarely, he rides his bike all the time, but he doesn't want to have bike lanes. We don't need bike lanes to remove the parking. We are a car society. Yes, I know the progressive Democrats in Sacramento want to change the system here in California. I didn't vote for those progressives, and I have three of them here on council right now. There are many people do not like this excuse of having people, force them out of their cars and take buses and take scooters. When's the last time you took a bus or a scooter to go shopping, to carry groceries, to go to work? People drive their cars, and if you're all about safety and so forth, why don't we all have electric vehicles? Not hybrids? That's halfway there. Some of you on council have gas-driven cars. Why, you know, you're being very hypocritical when you want the rest of the city to get out of their cars and take bikes and scooters and buses. We don't want it. It's not safe.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alex Kerkorian.
I was hoping Christopher was still here to do this for me, but I'll step in. So, good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Lieutenant Alex Kerkorian. I oversee our transparency, accountability, and audits bureau, and I wanted to make a brief announcement that we will be hosting our specialized equipment use annual report for 2023. It'll be in the community room, excuse me, the Rick Reyes Community Room, on Wednesday, September 25th at 6 o'clock. As you see on this flyer here, there's a QR code. You can take a screenshot of that and see this on our website, or you can just go to our website on our transparency page and take a look at the report there, and we will be discussing it again on Wednesday, September 25th at 6 o'clock. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alex Belakian.
So the community event that I want to talk about was posted yesterday by Dan Brotman. It is a fundraiser that he's throwing for Laura Friedman, and as you can see in the description there, he calls me a hateful extremist. If you flip to page two, I will show you, Dan, two concrete examples of threats that I've received in the last few months. The top one is from a Glendale resident with an active restraining order for assault against a woman, who was sending a message to my husband indicating that he knows our house number and the first letter of our street. So I would like you to give me at least one concrete example about how you can justify calling me a hateful extremist, and, more importantly, what responsibility you will bear if that man with a history of violence perpetuates violence against me or my husband. I work at two hospitals in Glendale, Dan. I round in the ICU. If you were on life support in ICU, do you know what I would do? I would do my job, and I would save your life. I would take that 2:00 a.m. phone call from the nurse. I wouldn't ask what political persuasion is he. I would save my life. Does that sound hateful to you? In my 10 years at USC Medical School, every year, I taught 150 medical students, 50 internal medicine residents, six pulmonary critical care fellows, how to save a life. In my career, I have taught more than 2,000 physicians how to save a life. What have you done? On the next page, you will see me with my e-bike in upstate New York, where my husband and I are restoring a historic home. We are restoring the clinic in the basement so that I can be a community lung specialist, because there's only one lung specialist in the city. It's a small city, it has 25,000 people. I ride my bike, or I walk to the hospital because it's so close. Does that sound like a hateful, anti-environmental extremist to you? So what I'd like to do is, you made that comment in public, and I would like, I think I deserve, a response from you in public, how you can justify that. I can pause my time if you want to answer. No, okay. You need to stop dividing the community. You need to stop calling concerned constituents like me hateful, anti-LGBT, anti-environmental extremists, okay? Two weeks ago, I came and I said that the bike lanes should be moved one or two blocks to the east to quieter residential streets like Louise and Jackson. I didn't come out against the bike lanes. I came out against your terrible execution of the bike lanes, okay? But you need to stop your rhetoric, because you are threatening public safety, you are threatening my safety, my husband's safety, okay? And you can continue that all you want, and I will be the candidate of public safety. I will continue to save lives, and you better hope that I win in November, because if I don't, I am coming for your seat in 2026. Get ready.
We have one caller. The caller is GUSD Parent. You are on air. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Asitarian and councilmembers. I'm a Glendale parent calling to register my comments with the city and have a video to be played after my message. I'm making this comment under a pseudonym, as it seems some members of council seem to have family members and associates who are not above filming and harassing anyone who disagree with their conduct or views. I'm seeing several videos online shot by councilmember Vartan Garpetian himself, as he joyrides above the speed limit throughout our city. I know all of the neighborhoods in these videos, and I am appalled to see Mr. Garpetian not only speeding down boulevards and quiet residential side streets, he's filming himself while driving, not with a mouse, but by hand. Isn't this against the law? Even if it isn't, it should be. It's incredibly dangerous. In the video that will be shown, it seems in this instance, his wife Armida may be the passenger filming their escapade. Why is this relevant? She's a former Glendale Unified School Board member who on several occasions verbally and publicly threatened parents who disagreed with her. The conduct from both of these folks really calls for some deep personal reflection, and I hope they can redirect their actions to do better, to respect others in this community. The people of Glendale deserve elected leaders who not only understand the laws, but also realize those laws apply to them as well, and that their role is to improve conditions for everyone, not just for themselves. It is unsafe to have electeds who put themselves first and the safety and dignity of us last. In a city where our car insurance rose just by moving to it, we have a problem here. How are we supposed to get our community to drive more safely when our own electeds won't? In this video, you will see Garpetian careening around bicyclists and pedestrians, including one with a stroller. There are no sidewalks in parts of our cities. The same side streets Mr. Garpetian would like bicyclists to stick to and stay out of the way. I would personally like to thank the council member, as his own documentation is a perfect example of how bike lanes and additional signaling could slow people down and save lives. Also, please make it safer for us to participate in our own governance. There are people coming to the meetings to intimidate, harass, and film citizens who want to advocate for fairness and safety. It's unacceptable. I hope these aggressors will change their stance and find new hobbies, anything other than harassing people. Do some community service. Take up a craft. Learn conversational Klingon. I don't care. These folks need to leave our city alone, as most of them don't even live here. Either way, some of the folks on the dais and in the audience need to stop obstructing progress, and I truly hope the city, the city will stop letting them. Councilman Garpetian should recuse himself from the vote on La Crenda Avenue Traffic Calming Infrastructure and Bike Lane Plan. I'm an engaged citizen, and I'm also a busy parent. I want to be devoting more time to my kids, but instead of making this call, because I wouldn't be a good parent, neighbor, or friend if I didn't take the opportunity right now to speak up for their safety and for all the kids and the people in this community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. You're out of time.
Do we have more?
Nope.
Oh, that's it.
That is all.
Next item? Well, we have some, I guess, let's just pass it over to us. Just, okay. All right, thank you. Next item?
Next are action items. Action item A, Public Works Regarding Update on the La Cressanta Avenue Rehabilitation Project. One Resolution Rejecting All Bids Dispensing With Competitive Bidding. Authorizing the Director of Public Works or his designee to directly negotiate with one or more bidders. Authorizing the City Manager to Execute a Construction Contract in an Amount Not to Exceed $14,750,000 and Approving a 10% Reserve Contingency in the Amount Not to Exceed $1,475,000 for the La Cressanta Avenue Rehabilitation Project, specification number 3829R. Two Resolution Rejecting All Bids Dispensing With Competitive Bidding. Authorizing the Director of Public Works or his designee to directly negotiate with one or more bidders. Authorizing the City Manager to Execute a Construction Contract in an Amount Not to Exceed $15,550,000 and Approving a 10% Reserve Contingency in the Amount Not to Exceed $1,555,000 for the La Cressanta Avenue Rehabilitation Project, specification number 3829R, which includes a Quick Build Demonstration Component. Three Resolution of Appropriation to Appropriate Funds for the La Cressanta Avenue Rehabilitation Project for the Original Scope of Work. Four Resolution of Appropriation to Appropriate Funds for the La Cressanta Avenue Rehabilitation Project for the Original Scope of Work with a Quick Build Demonstration Component.
All right, Mr. Galanian or Mr. Oganessian?
Good evening, Mayor Sartre and members of city council. Just as a refresher and reminder, as you may know, staff, we advertised this project based on some revisions to previous plans and specifications. And on July 24th of this year, we received three bids for the La Cressanta Avenue Rehabilitation Project. And after a thorough review, staff found that all three bids were non-responsive because they did not meet the minimum mandatory qualifications for contractors' references. So, to keep the project on track and reduce administrative costs, we recommend to reject all bids and negotiate with the bidders on this project instead of rebidding the project. Hence, we have provided two recommendations. One recommendation to move forward with the entire project with the full improvements, and the other one, based on council's direction and based on a previous conversation and direction from council, the potential to add a quick build demonstration as part of the full-blown, full-scale project. With that, I turn it over to Sarkis Oganessian, our city engineer, deputy director of public works, who will provide some milestones and schedule for the options that I indicated. And then we'll open it for questions. Mr. Oganessian?
Thank you, Mr. Galanian. Good evening, mayor and council members. The item before you is the La Cressanta Avenue Rehabilitation Project, and we have two options to share as Mr. Galanian stated. Option one would be to award a contract for the original scope of work. Construction would begin in November of this year. We would start with some underground work, quite a bit of underground work, actually. There's sewer, there's storm drain, there's traffic signals, there's fiber optic infrastructure that needs to be completed. It would follow with above-ground work, the intersection realignments, concrete work, traffic signal above-ground work. We'd continue that with the paving, where you'd receive a new street pavement. We also have a reflective pavement in the community planned. We then plant the trees, complete the signing and the striping. And we'd follow that with the creative crosswalks that are projected for the project. It would be a one-year construction timeframe that we're estimating, and of course, this is, of course, bearing, barring any unforeseen circumstances that may come up. The second option before you tonight is doing the original scope of work, but adding a quick build demonstration component. So, the schedule would stay on track, starting in November of 2024. The sequence of phasing would continue as shown. We would then begin a quick build demonstration to demonstrate what the planned striping improvements, including the bicycle infrastructure and the travel lane removals, would look like. This would commence before the paving is completed. It would take approximately six months. The six months would include analysis, data collection, feedback from the community, and then coming back to council on what the results are. And hopefully, that would then proceed with paving work in February of 2026 with the new street pavement and the reflective pavement. And that would continue with the trees and the signing and the striping as we decide, based on the quick build, and then the creative crosswalks. And this would take approximately 18 months to complete because the demonstration component is, again, as slated for six months. A quick reminder on the quick build option. Quick build will use temporary materials, and here on La Cressanta, we'll use traffic marking paint, flexible delineators, signage. We'll be removing the existing striping and installing paint striping for the temporary component if we choose that option. It'll obviously provide an opportunity to test the new road alignment, the travel lanes, the bike lanes. It'll still create the temporary improvements for bicyclists and pedestrians. It'll also allow us to engage the community and get real-time feedback. Expect it to last six months, as I stated prior, and it comes at an estimated cost of $800,000.
Thank you.
That completes.
If my colleagues have any questions, okay. And I understand that we have, at this point, 26 cards and 27 cards and two callers, correct? Or four callers, no? Okay. So, just as a note to everyone present, if you'd like to speak on this item, the last card or call will be taken upon the conclusion of the first speaker. I am going to be reducing the time to two minutes instead of three minutes so we can get through the meeting. And so, just if you have to call in or you're going to submit a card, please do so. Now, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Galanian.
Our first...
No, 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 we're not taking calls. We're taking questions, and then we'll take calls. Sorry.
I'll be very quick. I know people have been waiting. I don't want them to leave. So, with the demonstration, quick build or demonstration project, basically, it would be a build like Brand Boulevard that we basically install everything, we re-stripe the existing road, you don't do any of the infrastructure for six months. Is that what it is?
Councilmember Garpetian? So, we will be doing the intersection realignments and the above-ground and the underground work first for either option.
Okay.
Once we're completed with that and we're ready to pave the corridor, that's when we will re-stripe the corridor.
Okay.
Councilmember, if I may add to what Mr. Oganessian said, Councilmember Garpetian, the North Brand Boulevard Quick Build Demonstration Project was a standalone project just for the purpose of demonstration.
Okay, thank you.
All right. We'll take the speakers and callers now, and then my colleagues then have questions. We'll adjust those.
Our first speaker is Melissa Molton Church.
Hello again. My name is Melissa Molton Church, and I'd like to just start by reminding everyone that I am not a cyclist. I do not own a bicycle or skateboard, a scooter. I am a driver, and I love my car. And I am still in favor of the La Cressanta Avenue project. My family and I live on the corner of La Cressanta Avenue at one of the dangerous intersections this project will address. We have a daughter and two small dogs, and I have actual nightmares about them running out into that road. My daughter attends Fremont, and staff members who work the drop-off and pickup there tell of cars that fly off La Cressanta hitting the cones placed in the road to protect pedestrians. A caution sign was installed mid-road at a crosswalk, and it had to be removed because it was hit by so many speeding cars. This project is about improving the safety of a residential street near an elementary school, but the conversation has been hijacked by a handful of people who have the time to attend to these meetings that the parents of the young children at Fremont do not have. Those few voices have been disproportionately represented and overly influential in dragging this process out. My daughter is with a babysitter tonight so that I can be here to speak for my neighbors who are at home getting their kids ready for bed. And I am begging you to start the construction and stop the delays. And I'm also reminding you that a proposal for a safer street is not a battle in some culture war. The city of Glendale has delayed real safety measures affecting a community full of schoolchildren to appease a couple of people who've made it their hobby to oppose any proposal that doesn't directly benefit them. Please stop this waste of time and money and move forward with the permanent installation of the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Curtis Brown.
Hello, mayor and council members. My name is Curtis Brown. I live on La Cressanta Avenue at the corner of Rose Lawn. I have lived in this community for 14 years, adjacent to La Cressanta. I am in support of Agenda A, 8A, sorry, the La Cressanta Rehabilitation Project. In my time of living here, I have witnessed cars flying up and down the street, honking as they speed by. As someone who lives on the main street, coming out of my driveway is nothing short of a nightmare. With that in mind, I can only imagine what the kids and cyclists go through. I have a pre-teen who enjoys riding her bike, and every time she leaves, I am petrified for her safety. My driveway is slanted, which means when she rides out, she starts at a speed. Considering how cars whiz by, I am scared that someone is going to veer off and hit her or one of her friends that like to come over on their bikes as well. The fact that no one thinks of the kids and schools in this area, especially around the time they are going in and coming out, is outrageous. My son's girlfriend had her car hit while it was parked on the street on La Cressanta, and of course, they didn't stop or leave a note. I pray that after hearing all of us from the community, we urge you to put in the bike lane and slow traffic down. Turn our streets into a street instead of the speedway that it is now. Do it for us, do it for you, do it for the kids. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is...
You have to speak into the mic, sir.
So sorry. I do have a video that we submitted. If you can play it to show.
I stopped the clock. He had 30 seconds. You had 30 seconds.
You have 30 seconds for the video, so...
I just want you to see the video so you can have an eyewitness of what we see. It's a very quick video.
Just stop it at the 30 second.
And that's just a short version of what we go through every day.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Anna Tabuena Ruddy.
Good evening, mayor, council members, and city staff. My name is Anna Tabuena Ruddy, and I live in a cul-de-sac in Spar Heights. Our only way out of our cul-de-sac is through La Cressanta Avenue. My family is in support of option one, no quick build. We use La Cressanta Avenue every day, whether we're walking, biking, or driving. Drivers already own the majority of all roads. Why not share a wide road such as La Cressanta with others? My son and I were here two years ago advocating for a safe way for him to bike to school to Fremont Elementary. It passed, and we celebrated back then. So, why are we back here again? It saddens me that it's now too late for him to go south to Fremont by bike. He just started Rosemont Middle School last week, and we are hoping that he can bike north on La Cressanta before he graduates. I have to say that it's challenging to have families directly affected by these delays come here and attend these meetings again and again. It's a school night for many of us. Yet, here we are because it's so important for us to make sure our families get the bike lanes we deserve. Please do not delay this any further. Do not let obstructionists come up with weak arguments, creating unsafe conditions for our kids and our elderly, stirring up fear in our community. Biking for those who cannot yet drive, like my son, is fun and the easiest way to get around. Walking for those who can no longer drive, like my 85-year-old mother who walks everywhere, is healthy. We have waited long enough. We want permanent bike lanes, not a quick build demonstration project, which is a huge waste of resources. We already know we need this. We be brave, and let's do this. Lastly, I would like for my son to witness that his civic participation from two years ago and again tonight can yield positive results that benefit him and his generation. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ben Ruddy.
Hello, my name is Ben Ruddy. Two years ago, I gave a speech about why we should have bike lanes on La Cressanta Avenue. I was 11 years old and in Fremont Elementary School. Now, I'm 13 and in middle school, and bike lanes still haven't been built. These meetings are worthless if we do nothing about them. By building bike lanes, you could save multiple people's lives, including mine. I've almost gotten hit more than five times in this year alone. Only you have the power to stop it. Children can't drive, so to get to far places, we literally need to bike. Kids don't want to hear excuses. We want bike lanes. They should also be permanent because it would cost even more money to get rid of them afterwards. I want option one. We are the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sawyer Retano.
Hello, my name is Sawyer Retano. To get to my friends' houses, I have to use the sidewalk or the busy street La Cressanta Avenue and risk hitting or getting hit by other people. Two months ago, I was using the crosswalk when a man in a truck almost hit me. I walked away okay, but from that day on, I knew I had to do something about it. That's why I am speaking in front of you today. I am asking a small favor that has a huge effect on not just me, but the people around me too. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Eliana Brown.
Hello, my name is Eliana Brown, and I live in Spar Heights on La Cressanta, corner of Rose Lawn. Like my peers, I will be speaking about the need for bike lanes. When I was at Fremont, I had many problems getting there and back with multiple people on the road, with multiple people on the road and sidewalks. It was very scary, and with me living by a busy street, it's very scary. It's even scarier. Now that I'm at Rosemont, I cannot bike because of the dangers of getting up there. With one of the dangers being that when school is let out for the day, there are so many kids on the sidewalk, especially up at Rosemont. On Friday, I witnessed someone almost get hit, almost get hit by a car. But when they got back onto the sidewalk, they could not ride down because of the amount of kids. I myself have experienced this many times before in my life. I hope after listening to my experiences, you make the smart decision to add bike lanes to La Cressanta. Your decision can save so many lives. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Elijah Brown. Elijah Brown?
Hi, hi all. I'll be talking on 8A. I had a whole speech planned out, but I don't want to sound repetitive. I feel like this is really important because I live on La Cressanta. My family talks there. I live on La Cressanta. I come out on La Cressanta. I come out. That's my driveway. The amount of times I've almost been hit is crazy. And I know you might come up with like options, oh, more police, more police presence. There's already so many. That's more than enough. And it's really important that we put those in because it's a danger. What more is going to take? Like, there's so much that could happen. People's lives are at risk. This option could save lives, okay? Just think about that, and we really need to have this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is by Maya McCollum.
Hi there, everybody. My name is Maya McCollum, and I'm speaking in favor of item 8A. I live right up the street, and I don't have a bike or a car. I actually take... I actually take the three up when I want to go to businesses in Lacrasenta. My dentist is up there, so I walk a lot around Glendale, and I'm one of the pedestrians that would benefit from these updated roads. I implore the council to skip the unnecessary demonstration project. You guys have to fix the road regardless. We might as well go ahead, repave our roads, add the bike lanes, and make this a safer place for not only me, but all the kids that also live over there. Also, just as an addition, the creative crosswalks are beautiful, and I'm a big fan of them, so please keep doing them. And thank you guys so much for your time, and I hope you have a good day.
Thank you. Our next public comment is by Julie Kobe.
So, we do have rules in the House about not clapping or any of that. I did let it go because there were children speaking, and I want them to feel encouraged to speak up, whatever their position may be. Please respect the rules that are out there. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for your time tonight. My name is Julie, and I'm a resident of Sycamore Woods neighborhood in Verdugo City. I am thrilled about the improvements planned for Lacrasenta Avenue. As the many reports from Public Works show, the current road is in desperate need of safety improvements for all types of users, drivers, and otherwise. I live right next to the street, use it every day, and I look forward to the decrease in cars speeding, improved sidewalks for pedestrians, the trees, awesome, and the protected bike lane. I'm so excited about the possibility of safely biking or walking my children to Freeland Elementary School using this improved road in just a few short years. This is something I would never consider with the current layout and dangerous usage of this road. I took it here tonight, and I'm telling you, I went the speed limit, everyone went by me. It's just a road that is not safe. It's a speedway as many describe. I also urge the council to implement these improvements without delay. We know this road is unsafe for all types of road users, and we know that modifying the existing road to include a center turn lane will make it safer. While driving, turning left into my neighborhood from Lacrasenta is always a bit scary, as you never know if a car behind you is going to slow down. I personally witnessed two accidents on this road, on my bike and once by walking with my toddler. These accidents happen all the time. Also, people know what a three-lane road is like and how to use one. There are many of these types of roads in our area. Doing this reconfiguration in a temporary way, if not crystal clear, would create confusion for everyone, not to mention the extra costs to the city and taxpayers. After over five years of planning, outreach, and data supporting this plan as the best and only viable way to improve safety, let's get this done as soon as possible. And I'll add, despite there not being bike lanes, I see bicyclists every time I leave my house. If people are not seeing these bicyclists on the road, that's terrifying and all the more reason to create safe lanes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next public comment is by Mike Mohill.
My name is Mike Mohill. I have a couple of questions. The cost is $800,000 for this project. We have over almost a billion dollars in unfunded pension obligations. Why do we use this money to pay off the pensions? You're leaving the children, the grandchildren, to pay the debt on the pensions. That's number one. Why do we have more law enforcement on that street? That doesn't cost a lot of money. It doesn't disrupt anything. The people who live on that street and park their cars on that street, either for themselves or their guests, where are they going to park now? Has anybody thought about that? Where's the guest parking going to be? We can always change the speed limit on Lacrasenta Avenue and enforce that. That's cheaper than making any major changes to the system that's there. Change the speed limit. Have more law enforcement. Then you won't have people coming here saying, "We need to make the changes." The simplest change we could have made years ago is post a 25 miles an hour speed limit, not 35. 35, you get people to go to 40. That's why people are going fast. Change the speed limit. That's much cheaper. That will slow the traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Susan Brusellian.
Good evening, council and staff. I fully support efforts to slow down traffic, and I'm all for bicycle safety. However, I'm opposed to the removal of traffic lanes. We are already experiencing the consequences of North Rand Boulevard pilot project. The state mandated widening of the roads prior to the 210 freeway construction. I have an old article from the Leader newspaper I'd like to read from. In the mid-1960s, the political charge was made, change was made, that the California Highway Commission was in fact a master planning agency for the entire state. Its decision on freeway routes have lasting impact on local communities and Lacrasenta today in a state of transition, the opening of the Foothill Freeway. First impact was upon traffic patterns as long lines of automobiles converged at access ramps. Ocean View Boulevard experienced considerable traffic congestion. The freeway forced widening of major local streets such as Ocean View, Rosemont, Lacrasenta, Pennsylvania avenues, and they were reconstructed. The impact on first responders cannot be overstated. This is in direct contrast to what some of you have claimed. Firefighters and first responders are in strong opposition to the removal of traffic lanes for bike lanes. Why are their concerns being completely dismissed? In April, Battalion Chief Andrew Gano of the Glendale Fire Department appeared before Traffic and Transportation Commission to express his deep concerns. He opposes removal of traffic lanes that significantly impedes their ability to respond to emergencies. He says it makes it almost impossible to navigate through in a timely manner. Are you dismissing the expertise of one of our own battalion chiefs and accusations on people who are opposed to you labeling anti-LGBTQ and white rights?
Thank you. Our next public speaker is Don LaBrash.
Good evening, council. I've spoken to you before. We had no outreach above Honolulu Avenue. I respectfully disagree with a Fremont mother. The original outreach was from Fremont and bicycle groups. You had zero responses from my area. I've asked repeatedly that a demonstration project be done before you signed a contract. Ballards, what have you, that should not cost a fortune. I don't get that. As far as speeders, we're going to still get single-lane speeders. We haven't done anything to try to slow traffic. Nothing. No signs. There's a sign on Pennsylvania now, "Respect your city, follow laws." We didn't get any of that. We've tried nothing. This is a 100-year-old road that didn't have any problems till recently. So the solution is to remove the lane. I'm all for the project without removing the lane. If this plan fails, it's going to cost a lot of money to restore these. A city-funded study suggested sharrows, not lane removal. That would save a million dollars per the last estimate. Educate the driver. Then when they drive to other parts of the city, they're going to know they need to leave space. Remind them with signage. So the study also predicted full capacity of these existing four lanes in the future. We got more housing, we'll have more people, we will have more cars. We'll have better transit, but we're going to need cars, whether they're electric or not. Finally, I've got to speed it up. A Montrose Shopping Park Board member, Association to ask you, Councilman Abrotman, what happened if this is a disaster? You replied, "The lanes will be restored." We won't have gas tax money for that. I know you don't have to respond, but how do we restore the lanes if this is a mess? Do you care to respond? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Heather Kokolowski. And following Heather is Ray Shelton and Rich Batia. So Heather Kokolowski.
Good evening. My name is Heather, and I'm a homeowner in Sycamore Woods, just off of Lacrasenta Avenue. I'm here to express my strong support for the proposed improvements to Lacrasenta Avenue. As someone who lives right next to the street and uses it several times a day, I'm excited about the positive impact these changes will bring. The addition of protected bike lanes, improved sidewalks and crosswalks, and a center turn lane will make the area significantly safer for everyone, drivers, pedestrians, and cyclists alike. As a former Fremont Elementary School parent, I know firsthand the challenges of navigating Lacrasenta Avenue with children. When my kids were younger, I would have loved to bike with them to school, but the lack of safe options forced us to drive instead. The speeding cars and lack of crosswalk made it too dangerous. These proposed improvements would have made a world of difference then, and they will for families in the future. The center turn lane is particularly crucial. Turning left from Lacrasenta is often nerve-wracking due to speeding drivers who aren't paying attention. This simple addition would greatly enhance safety, as would additional crosswalks. These changes are a small, yet vital, part of a larger project, and it's time to move forward without further delay for the safety and well-being of our community. I believe the quick build demo is not necessary and is likely to just cause confusion, so let's just get to it. I also strongly support future proposals for protected bike lanes along Honolulu and the Verdugo Wash Class 1 bicycle path. Starting with Lacrasenta Avenue is a crucial first step toward building a transportation network that serves everyone, not just cars. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ray Shelton. Next is Rich Batia.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, staff, members of the community. My name is Rich Batia. I've been a resident of Spar Heights for 38 years. I have seen dramatic increase of traffic along this Lacrasenta Avenue speedway over the decades. It's been a safety, public safety issue for some time now and needs to be addressed. I am here this evening to support Agenda Item 8A, the Lacrasenta Rehabilitation Project for a variety of reasons. Number one, it is a public safety issue for walkers, bikers, and riders, especially with the number of young children living in the neighborhood. Number two, I have my concerns about the quick build demonstration aspect of this project, but that will allow the Public Works team to modify the project in real time, which will enhance the opportunity for it to be successful. Number three, this project has been talked about for more than two years now. Nine community meetings, they were well documented, voiced concerns from local citizens, and yes, there is no perfect plan. But this plan does create safer spaces for walkers, bikers, and riders. I thank you. Let's move forward, and I thank you for your courage to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is David Billet. Following David is Chris Davis and Paul Rabenoff. So David Billet.
I'm David Billet, Glendale homeowner. I'm here to voice my support for the staff recommendations for the Lacrasenta Avenue Rehabilitation Project. Pardon me. At nearly six lanes wide, Lacrasenta Avenue resembles a freeway, which accounts for excessive speeding, especially after exiting the freeway. Since it practically looks like a freeway, it feels like a freeway, it's treated like a freeway. The Lacrasenta Project solves multiple problems on this mostly residential street with infrastructure improvements that have value not only for multimodal transit, but also for the environment by capturing stormwater and planting trees. Most important are the improvements to public safety. Pardon me. As a citizen with limited mobility, I am terrified to cross such a wide street with speeding vehicles. The removal of slip lanes and adding highly visible crosswalks and bumpouts to shorten pedestrian distances will make Lacrasenta Avenue safer to walk, to cycle, and drive. There's no need for a demonstration project that will considerably add to the cost of this, especially since there's really no viable alternatives to address the safety issues. I look forward, as a retired citizen, as a cyclist and a walker, for Lacrasenta Avenue becoming another part of a citywide plan to improve safety and mobility for all, for pedestrians, cyclists, and drivers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Chris Davis. Next is Paul Rabenoff.
Good evening, Mayor Satrin and council members. I'm here to voice support for this project for all the reasons stated here and in all of the previous meetings. I'm going to speak about a peculiar circumstance surrounding the request for Measure R funding. When Lacrasenta Avenue was last on the council agenda, a decision was made to basically postpone moving forward with hiring a contractor to allow city staff to apply for $3 million in Measure R funding. According to the packet accompanying tonight's agenda, staff prepared and submitted the application and confirmed with Metro staff that the application had been scheduled as part of the Metro Board's July agenda. Somehow, the application was subsequently pulled from that agenda, apparently without the city's knowledge or involvement. This raises several questions. How and why did this happen? From where and whom did this come? And how could this be done without the applicant, the city, not being informed or included? This all has resulted in a significant waste of valuable staff, time, and resources. I hope you will investigate it further and get to the bottom of this.
Thank you. Next is Edward Gonzalez.
Honorable City Council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Edward Gonzalez, and I live in Lacrasenta, near Lacrasenta Avenue. I'm here today to urge you to vote in favor of permanently implementing all safety improvements and not pursuing a quick build option. I'm the father of a one-and-a-half-year-old son who can't get enough of being on the back of our electric cargo bike and when we run our daily errands and when I take him to daycare. He screams "Moon" and "Bird" at the top of his lungs when he points with glee and sees them in the open sky above. However, one of the streets I won't take him on is Lacrasenta Avenue, as much as we'd love to use it to get to Glorietto or Verdugo Park or further along into Glendale. It's frightening to drive on Lacrasenta Avenue, much less bike or walk. The statistics back the fear up with an average of a crash every few weeks on this speedway. The proposed improvements will go a long way to making the street safer for all users. And the city should not waste money on a quick build bike project. Three to six months to evaluate one island of isolated bike infrastructure, however good it is, is destined for failure. The changes need to be permanent so that other streets in a bike infrastructure network can be built around and connect to Lacrasenta Avenue. And as these pieces get built out, more and more people will build up the curiosity and confidence to say, "Hey, maybe I'll save up for that e-bike so I can bike my kids to school and avoid that awful drop-off line." Or, "It's a beautiful day. Maybe I will try riding today to work." So again, I urge you to vote in favor of permanently implementing the design as proposed with all bike safety features. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bert Culver.
Hello, honorable mayor and city council members. I stand before you today as a concerned resident living near Lacrasenta Avenue, strongly advocating for the much-needed rehabilitation project. As someone who navigates this area daily, I've witnessed firsthand the dangers posed by the outdated infrastructure, particularly the perilous crosswalk at Lacrasenta in Piedmont, 100 feet wide. Several close calls have made it abundantly clear that the improvements are not just desired, but essential for public safety. Furthermore, the inclusion of bike lanes in this project is a crucial step towards a move towards sustainable and accessible city. The existing faded sharrows in the area offer little protection to cyclists, and the rising popularity of cycling demands safer infrastructure. I'm disheartened, however, by the recent attempts to derail this progress. The recent attacks on Representative Laura Friedman by anti-bike activists and social media, led in part by the spouse of her political opponent, reveal a disturbing truth. These objections are rooted not in genuine concern for the community, but in crass political maneuvering. We cannot allow electioneering to hold our city hostage. This project represents a significant investment in Glendale's future, improving safety for pedestrians, cyclists, and drivers alike. The need for these improvements is undeniable, and the timing is critical. I should have worn my glasses today. I urge you to vote in favor of Lacrasenta Avenue Rehabilitation Project prioritizing the long-term well-being of our community over the short-sighted political games. And there's no need for a demo project. Just get it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Shane Lee.
Hello, Mayor Satrin, members of City Council. My name is Shane, and I've been a Lacrasenta resident my whole life. I fully support Option 1. I don't think we need a quick build. I think we should build this bike lane... I think we should build this bike lane project as soon as possible. Yeah, I emphatically support the La Cressenta Avenue Rehabilitation Project. I think we should move forward with Option 1 in its entirety. The proposed reconfiguration that will include a center turn lane and protected bike lanes, including amazing crosswalks, bike signals, and redesigned intersections for safer passage to Fremont Elementary, must be approved and implemented as soon as possible. The Bicycle Transportation Plan, BTP, adopted by City Council in 2012, identifies La Cressenta Avenue as a study corridor for the implementation of dedicated bicycle infrastructure by repurposing driving lanes. In order to simultaneously implement mobility freedom in Glendale and also achieve our carbon emissions reduction goals, City Council ought to approve this project. Bike lanes improve public safety by protecting bicyclists, many of whom are children, from dangerous drivers. The La Cressenta Avenue Rehabilitation Project will install nearly 11,500 linear feet of new Class 4 protected bicycle lanes, as well as 5,500 linear feet of new Class 2 buffered bicycle lanes. Our city must reorient funding away from dangerous, polluting, and expensive car-centric infrastructure, from, sorry, our city must reorient funding away from dangerous, polluting, and expensive car-centric infrastructure and towards safe, sustainable, and healthy-inducing or health-inducing bicycle infrastructure. A city's budget represents its values, and we must demonstrate our values by funding and building the La Cressenta Avenue Rehabilitation Project immediately. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rosa Adi, and following Rosa is Tanya Avakian and Hovik Avakian.
Good evening, council members. My name is Rosa Adi, and I'm a resident of La Cressenta Avenue. Actually, I live right on La Cressenta Avenue. I have concern about the rehabilitation project since it will affect my daily commute. I'm not against bikers or bike lanes, but I'm opposed to having a bike lane if it will result in a reduction of traffic lane and elimination of parking spaces. Every day, I back out of my driveway multiple times a day. When I'm backing out, I'm already concerned with avoiding hitting pedestrians out jogging or walking with their dogs, and also avoiding colliding into an oncoming traffic. Now, with the potential of hitting a biker as well as moving at a much faster speed, it makes me worry about their safety even more. In previous Glendale City meeting, we discussed about having a trial-based project to see if the neighborhood's reaction, but it will never came true. I strongly encourage council to create a trial run out of this project and get the community feedback prior to making any concrete decision on the matter. Thank you. And one other thing I'm going to say, I live right on La Cressenta Avenue. We just remodeled our house, and honestly, this worries me, and I'm thinking about selling our house. A lot of people, they came and talked about it, they live in Sycamore, they live on a cul-de-sac, they are not going to be affected strictly by the living right on La Cressenta Avenue. We have multiple, multiple hundreds of emails, hundreds of signatures, they did not show up because whatever excuses they have, but we can show you all the paperwork. And these are the people who they live right on La Cressenta Avenue, not on the cul-de-sac, not on the Sycamore. I love bikers, but I mean, this is going to affect our daily life. I already, please consider.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tanya Avakian.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Tanya Avakian, and I'm also a resident of La Cressenta Avenue. I would just like to raise some concerns that I have with Option 1. Just want to start out with saying that I'm not opposed to bikers, I'm not opposed to bike lanes. I'd love to hear all the different types of bike lane options that we could do to make this project work. However, currently, I am a little paranoid, as it is, with backing out of my driveway, potentially hitting a pedestrian that's even walking on the sidewalk, or with the oncoming traffic that's going by. So with the added addition of bikers right out by the, right by our driveways, coming down at quick speeds while I'm juggling, you know, pedestrians, while I'm juggling trying to see the oncoming traffic, that is definitely a concern for me. I do want to make it clear, however, that I am against the removal of a traffic lane. Think about it from my point of view, backing out of my home driveway, at least there's two lanes of traffic where they have the right-of-way, the drivers. They can potentially go to the leftmost lane and give me some leeway to be able to back out of my house. I've seen it where I've been waiting for five minutes just to back out of my driveway because of how busy our street does get in the mornings, in the afternoons. So at least with, if we were to have one lane, just imagine how condensed it's going to be. If traffic jams are a concern for many of us, but speed is also a concern, then I would strongly suggest council to consider the speed limit. Consider bringing in law enforcement, making some adjustments there, rather than eliminating an entire lane for residents that need to back out of their driveways. So I would be more for that, changing, potentially making some changes to the speed limit and getting law enforcement involved. Also, the first responder is concerned with the centermost lane. If we only have one lane in either direction...
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Thank you. And the next comment is by Hovik Avakian.
Good evening, council. I'm here to oppose the project. I'm not against bike lane, but as previous people said, we live right on La Cressenta, and I have no problem with telling my address. I live on 3548 La Cressenta Avenue. I heard other people, for the project, 99% of their concern is the speed on the street. There's, the speed on the street does not give you guys the right to spend $17 million, $14 million to make bike lanes or reduction of the street line and removing the parking spot. As an Armenian, we're very hospitable people. We invite people over, we have barbecues all the time, and we have guests all the time, unlike some other people, once a year, you know, Christmas to Christmas or Thanksgiving to Thanksgiving, they have people over. I have people over all the time. Once a month, we have get-togethers with all friends, all the people that we have. Where are they going to park? You're going to take 53 parkings from, on the street? Where are they going to go? I'm going to invite my elderly, and they have to park a street down the street or on off-the-streets? You're going to come from Orkowitz, you're going to come from Rosemont, you're going to come from off-the-streets, and you're going to try to merge on La Cressenta Avenue? And from two lanes, it's going to go to one lane? You're going to wait there forever in order to merge to the main lane because the traffic is going to be, keep going and going, and you're not going to be hesitant of going on La Cressenta Avenue. Now, if you have a little bit of time, then you would not have time at all. I strongly suggest Ari's option that he said, let's try the trial.
Thank you, Mr. Avakian.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Avakian, would you be supportive of having the sidewalk on your side of the street widened?
What is that going to do?
Having a wider sidewalk.
But what is the benefit of that?
Having more space for pedestrians. I know the area very well, the sidewalk's pretty narrow. It would allow for people to ride their bikes on the sidewalk. I mean, because it sounds like you don't want anything changed on your side of the street. Is that what I'm hearing?
No, I'm not against the bike lane, but I see bike lane on the other side. On the other side, I see that because there's already six feet wide space there, so they can ride there. But my main concern is the two lane to become one lane. And I highly, $800,000 versus $14 million? Let's try the $800,000. Let's see, six months, maybe six months later, I come and I say, I apologize. Everything is working beautiful. I'm coming out of my driveway, no issues, bike lane is working beautiful, the streets are not as compact as I thought it would be, and we go on. But if it's the other way around, at least you guys don't spend the 14 and you spent the 800 and got the message.
So I do want to be very clear on that, the cost, the 14 million is not for bike lanes.
No, 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 it's for the voting.
It's for repave of the street, yes.
Would give us better idea of that thing is good or not. I'd rather spend $800,000 and find out.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're, okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Our next public comment is by Peter Herbert. Following Peter is Alek Bartrosov, and following Alek is Jeff Volmer.
Hello. I'm here tonight to speak in support of Option 1, which is the immediate build without the quick build. Before I get into that, a couple rebuttals. Studies show that the most effective way to reduce speed is road construction, how the street is designed, much more effective than enforcement. Signs and police will not reduce speed like changing the road width will. As far as first responders, the vast majority of things that they respond to are car accidents, and if we make this street safer, they will have fewer emergencies to go to. I think the quick build is unnecessary, and we know that it needs to happen. $800,000 required to do that could be better spent addressing the main concerns with this project. We hear it's a matter of safety on one side, and it's, or it's time to get through there, or it's cut-through traffic. I live on Rosemont, which has been a cut-through street for many years, two cars have been totaled in front of my house. I understand the concern about cut-through traffic. That $800,000 can be used to mitigate effects seen after the fact. If people are cutting through on Sycamore or Rosemont, they can address that. It's far better than it is to do a quick build. I find it very difficult to believe, after we have roughly 10 hours of public comment about the safety concerns in the street, that this street will ever be able to go back to two lanes and the liability that that would incur on the city, given all of the public comment about the safety concerns here. So we're not going to go back to two lanes, it's going to be one lane, and the quick build is not worth the time and the money, the delays. So please, it's been two years already.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members, mayor. I wanted to share some information and data that I just discovered through our Vision Zero planning effort. I know there's been a lot of talk about data, crashes, whether or not the city is safe. We had a comment at a previous meeting about crashes going down, down, down. Of course, it wasn't disclosed at that meeting that the downward trend that we were seeing was a result of COVID years. So as you can see, now that we have 2021 data and data that's coming in beyond that, the crash rates, specifically killed and severely injured in the city, is going back up. Next slide, please. There's been 5,000 crashes in the city of Glendale in the last 10 years. Because of those crashes, that results in 37 fatalities in the last 10 years. 200 severely injured individuals in our city as a result of these collisions. Next slide, please. And through that planning process, Vision Zero, by the way, the consultant who worked on this is from Los Angeles, mapped out this crash data and where the crashes are occurring. This is specifically vehicle crashes, and what you see is the light blue lines, which is La Cressenta going north and south, and also the segment of La Cressenta as it approaches Verdugo. And it's considered medium density as part of this Vision Zero effort. Next slide, please. And as a result of those collisions and other collisions, including ones involving pedestrians, the north-south segment of La Cressenta specifically does result in it being on the high-injury network as part of this Vision Zero process. So there's been a lot of talk about bike benefits. This is really about crash safety and the benefits of that center turn lane that's going to be introduced. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir Bartrosov, I have a quick question. Can you, is that red line Honolulu Avenue, or it's another street?
I'm sorry, which line?
The second one from the top, that one. Is that Honolulu Avenue?
Yes.
And it's considered high-injury network?
Yes.
Okay, good to know.
It's on approach to Lowell. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jeff Volmer.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Volmer. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm a 20-year resident of Verdugo Woodlands, just off Verdugo Road. I don't live in the immediate neighborhood of this project, but I support it. I feel that anything that makes the streets safer for bicycles and pedestrians is also making it safer for cars. I commuted back and forth to work in Boyle Heights for 10, 12 years, and so I'm a little bit familiar with riding my bike in Glendale and Los Angeles. And I'm really appreciative of the council for greenlighting a project like this. So I hope you'll turn your attention to Verdugo Road after Cressenta Avenue, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a few callers. The first caller is Rachel. Rachel, you're on air, you have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Rachel, and I live in La Cressenta, right off of La Cressenta Avenue. I'm voicing my full support of 8A, Option 1, and I would like to yield the rest of my time to a video that was already submitted by Donna Post. It is called "Video Speeding North on La Cressenta to LaCressenta.mp4." Thank you.
I'm not sure if it's germane to the Agenda Item, Madam Mayor.
Our next caller is Matt Blaney. Matt, you're on air, you have two minutes.
Hello, City Council. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. This is my first time speaking, so I'm really excited. My name is Matt Blaney, and I live in La Cressenta, just above Foothill. And really, I have two perspectives on this project. As a driver, whenever I'm driving down La Cressenta, that's a couple times a week, because my grandma lives east of Montrose Village, so I use La Cressenta to get down to her house a couple times a week. And like every time I go on this road, there's hardly any traffic, so, and that's all times of day, really. It seems like something that could be cut down to one lane. So I should have started with, I do support this Agenda item. Yeah, so I do think it could go down to one lane, and it would affect traffic. And then, as a pedestrian, one of my favorite parts of all of LA County is Montrose Village. But when I, when I'm getting there as a pedestrian and trying not to use my car because it's less than three miles from me, it still feels difficult because my main road I would use is La Cressenta or Ocean View or Deuce Foothill, and it just does not feel safe. So as a bicyclist or a walker, it would be great, and I would spend much more time in Montrose. Yeah, this is... Yeah, this is, this is a, this is a great project. And I hope it goes well and goes through. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Our next caller is Martha Senfil. Martha, you're on air. You have two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Martha Senfil. I'm a 26-year resident of Glendale, and I enthusiastically support staff's recommendations for Item 8A, Option 1. I want to note, as others have, that in October, it will be two years since council already approved this project. It's a bit dismayed to hear continued debate on the project. Staff has already responded fully to all concerns that have been raised. And you have heard wide support from many families who live in the area. I urge you to pass this option and move forward. Let's make Glendale safe, not just for bicyclists and walkers and families, but for motorists too. Many people have spoken very eloquently about how this actually affects everyone in a positive way. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next caller is Renee Brent. Renee, you're on air. You have two minutes.
Hi, I'm Renee, and I support Option 1 being built now. Staff Option 1 is about balance and livability. Catering to cars harms Glendale. Cars serve only the individual inside them, and we live in community. I have lived in Glendale for over 30 years and am a volunteer coach for the Crescenta Valley Mountain Bike Team, which serves 6th through 12th graders. Today, we have 50 kids at Montrose Park learning to challenge and strengthen themselves through cycling. The demonstration is not needed nor cost-effective. And many other speakers have had very good comments in support of the project, which I would like to acknowledge. Please proceed with the project now and improve livability and safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final caller is Anna Simonian. Anna, you're on air. You have two minutes. Anna Simonian? Our last caller doesn't, hasn't been responding, so I will drop the call. And that is all for public.
Thank you. I have a couple questions for staff. The issue of backing out of the driveway that was raised. I did take a look at, the only reason that I asked for the card, I think you guys noticed this, because I wanted to pull up just to see what the street looks like and you pulling out of your driveway and if it is curved or not. The way I see it, the street is straight, but then like way up top, there is a curve that's kind of coming down. Could staff address the zone backing out and enough space for them to be able to get out? Because I, you know, I can't envision what the bike lane looks like and how much, how much space they really have and whether that curve up top of the hill makes a difference or not for them. Does my question make sense?
Yeah, I'll try to answer that in a way that makes sense. So, Madam Sotchen, the space to back out of the driveways currently, you have to pass a parking lane, and then you back out into the number-two travel lane. In the proposed alignment for a protected bicycle lane option, which is primarily south of the corridor, or half the corridor, south of the nursery, you would be passing the bicycle lane, and then you'd be passing a buffer zone, and then parking. So, you have slightly more space to back out, but you will be crossing a bicycle lane in the process.
Okay.
In the northern corridor portion, you'll be backing out similar past a parking lane, but then there'll be buffer zones. So, you, in theory, you have more space to back out.
Okay, so it'll be for their area, so?
Their area, I looked up their address, they're on the southern portion. And that, right now, is proposed as a protected bicycle lane. So, they'll be passing past the protected bicycle lane, then the protected buffer zone, and then the parking lane. So, they'll have more place for their car to sit in the roadway before actually going into the travel lane. But that's obviously being mindful of the bicycle lane and the bicyclists being mindful of vehicles backing in and out of the driveways.
Okay.
Can I follow up on that particular question, Madam Mayor? I can wait later. But I understand that there's, there'll be more room. Let's talk about the density of vehicles on that lane that someone's trying to back out onto. Won't that density be twice as much as previously, when there were two lanes in each direction? And by density, I'm not trying to get fancy, but cars per square foot, cars per particular distance. Isn't it true there would be a greater density with one and one, rather than two and two currently?
With the removal of a travel lane, the density will increase, correct, Councilmember Najarian? But it would depend on the time of day and the peak hour?
A lot of other factors, okay.
Thank you.
Do my colleagues have questions or comments?
So, we're finished with the public?
Yes, we don't have any more public speakers, so. Yes, we're done.
I don't, I don't have questions, but?
You have comments. Councilmember Kusakian, do you have questions?
I do.
Okay.
In the report, there was mention of, I think it was brought up, the funds that we had applied for through Metro. Is there any clarification as to how the request was removed or why it was removed? Do we know?
Councilmember Kusakian, based on the communication that staff, city staff, public works and engineering staff have had with Metro staff, it was removed temporarily, or, in other words, put on hold pending the result of council's direction. But staff has also been informed that it will appear on the agenda of Metro's board on their next meeting.
Pending council's direction, regarding what?
Regarding the direction on moving forward with this project.
Wait, wait, we, this council had provided direction on moving forward. We're approving the bids at this point, or denying the bids, or moving forward with you negotiating for the bids. But the council had made a commitment and decision. So, how did, from my understanding, that's our money?
Madam Sotchen, you are correct. Council had directed, provided direction on moving forward with bidding the project, advertising the project for bids.
This council approved, moving forward the project, which included then going to an RFP process. So, I'm trying to understand how an item gets pulled from an agenda waiting for an approval for a bid versus the approval of the project.
Again, Madam Mayor, based on the information that we have received, it was pulled and put on hold. Metro?
Well, typical Metro-style agenda is controlled by the mayor, by the chair, which is Mayor Bass and her staff.
Do we know why Mayor Bass would have pulled it?
We can ask her.
Okay. So, when we reached out, because it says, you guys did reach out by phone and email. But they weren't, they were unable to provide the reason for removal of the city of Glendale. So, I mean, has that changed since this report was published? Because what you're saying is that the reason was that they were waiting for tonight's meeting, but the staff report says unable to provide reason for removal. So, what did Metro do? Did they provide a reason, and that was it, or they did not provide a reason?
They did not provide the reason to staff. Upon further inquiry, we were told that we should check with our representative on the board. And I asked Councilmember Najarian, who is our representative? And that was the reason I was given. Again, it's technically not our money, but we need to apply for it depending on the project that would qualify what that kind of finding.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. You go ahead and then?
My understanding is, last time, we had the budget. It was budgeted for, we had the budget, and staff came up with the idea that there is $3 million or so available at Metro. If we apply for it, we may get that $3 million. So, those funds that we appropriated for this project could be used for some other projects, basically. We would have $3 million. That was my understanding. Am I correct? I just want to make that clear, that my understanding was correct.
Yes, Councilmember Karpetian, based on the items and the cost of individual line items and the bid schedule that we received related to active transportation, those amount of bids or sub-bids qualify for the measure of funding that later on, staff applied for or asked to be put on the agenda.
So, this is, but this?
I'm not sure why it was pulled or what have you, but I just wanted to?
No, so when I, when I, when I say that this is our, technically, we're asking for our money, right? When you say we may, it's not a matter, so there's never a time that when we ask for an amount, like we've been denied through Metro, when it's our own funding?
Madam Sotchen, we haven't been denied, but it's at the discretion of Metro Board.
What the issue, can I just, what the issue here is, the timing of when it was removed off calendar and trying to receive clarity as to why that was removed. Councilmember Najarian says that we should ask Mayor Bass. My question would be, Councilmember Najarian, have you asked Mayor Bass to find out why she removed it? Since I'm not?
I understand with the new chair, Chair Han, Supervisor Han, that is now back on the agenda.
Correct.
And I have urged her to put it on as soon as possible. So, we're looking at perhaps September, because we're dark in August.
And my understanding was that this item was part of consent, correct?
It's typically consent item, I believe.
Is it a consent item on the Metro?
I can't confirm that at this moment, but I believe it was.
Okay. So, I would, I would like an answer for that in more detail. So, I would ask, I will reach out as well, but Councilmembers Najarians are also our representative. And so, you know, if it's on next meeting, but I, I'm kind of, all right, go ahead.
Can I? I had a few more questions for staff, so. That was one of them, is that portion of the report, I had a question regarding, because it did seem out of the normal operating procedure of both Metro and how our projects have been treated at the Metro level. And maybe we'll get an answer to the mystery, maybe we won't. But I also have a question in regard to how, you know, I brought up the issue of, you know, is there any way to put up cones and see, you know, whether there's this issue with safety lane or say, safety vehicles, first responders being able to respond to issues? And the response I'm receiving from staff is that that will cost $800,000. So, could you please explain, Mr. Ogonesian, how like that price? Like, I get it, because it has to do with the restriping to some extent. But really, $800,000, it's a lot of money. So, can you kind of help me understand and break it down a little?
Sure. Councilmember Kusakian, so to just put up cones to demonstrate how the project is going to work is not feasible, because cones are temporary traffic control measures that are intended for a few days at most, not for a certain time period, so that we can determine exactly how the lane configuration is working. So, therefore, we would have to remove the striping that's in place currently and then re-stripe the corridor with paint striping. We actually obtained estimates of costs. We've compared them to bids that we've recently received that we are in construction on currently. And the costs are very commensurate with, with the current price currently. And so, $600,000 of that $800,000 is for the striping, removal, and replacement. And $200,000 is for the temporary case 71 deflector cones.
Okay. And can you explain in terms of, we've heard the term being thrown out now a few times about the overall cost? How is a $14 million cost broken down in terms of what the bicycle portion of it would cost?
So, the, the total cost is approximately 14,750, $14,750,000. Of that, approximately $1 million, including the contingency, is for bicycle infrastructure.
So, it's about almost one to one in terms of doing a test project versus implementing it? $800,000 versus $1 million?
You could say that.
Yeah, if we're rounding up.
If we're rounding.
With a $200,000 difference. They're close enough. Okay, and if we were to, why can't the design or configuration be such as some have suggested, to have a two-way bike lane on one side? I guess it would be the more, it would be the west portion of the street versus the east portion along where the homes tend to be. There's a wash. I'm thinking of it in the terms of the area that I'm, I'm most familiar with, because my folks live in that area. I drive there about five times a week, if not more sometimes. And I'm picturing it in my head, including the part where it bends. And why, why can't we do the portion of the two-way bike lane on the side alongside the wash and the golf course?
By portion of two-way bike lane, you mean why can't we do a two-way, like a cycle track on one side of the street? Because there's, currently, there is no portion that's two-way.
No, no. So, the design that we have proposed for us, as in front of us, is to have one bike lane on one side, another bike lane on the other side.
Correct.
There have been suggestions as to taking, making a bike lane on one side of the road that is one direction, in one way, and another direction, another. Does that make sense?
Yes, so that would be a cycle track, is what it's typically called. Cycle tracks require, it's a wider infrastructure, so about 12 feet wide. You'd also then include the protected facility to protect that cycle track. There's also the connectivity to the eastern portion of the neighborhood that's severely limited. You'd have to create crossings to be able to get to that cycle track safely by bicyclists. And we actually have one bicycle crossing now. It's going to be near Fremont to be able to allow bicyclists that are traveling southbound to be able to safely cross eastbound and then go to Fremont, and vice versa. So, it'll be severely limiting to have a cycle track in this corridor on the west side. It'll also introduce additional complications to the signalized intersections. So, we'd have to account for additional infrastructure to be able to signalize and safely account for traffic that's going in the opposite direction on a bike, when there's also vehicles and turning movements at those intersections.
Those are my questions. Thank you.
You have more questions? Councilmember Brom, did you have questions, or did you have comments?
I have comments, but I do want to go back to the question on Metro, if I could. So, the question was, and I mean, we're kind of beating around the bush, but Councilmember Najarian is our board representative. Have you, you know, the whole thing was a big mystery. I know staff was making multiple calls, trying to figure out what happened. They had been told that it was, it went all the way through what they call their Legisstar system. So, it went all the way up to the board's office. It was approved. It was expected to be on. Apparently, a call came in from the board secretary's office to the chief planning officer around July 4th weekend, saying that it should be pulled off of the calendar. So, it is a big mystery, and none of us were, you know, staff wasn't informed of it. So, did you ask, is the protocol such that only Mayor Bass could have done that? And have you asked her? And have you asked her if she did and why she did? Because we, we, I feel, and I think my colleagues feel, we need to understand this. We want to understand what happened because it is highly unusual.
So let me give you a little background since, let's put it all in context. Measure R was the half-cent sales tax increase voted on by the voters in 2009. On the Metro Board, I was the deciding vote for that. There was a lot of opposition. However, one of the requirements that I had advocated for was for cities that do not have significant transit projects. At that time, it was the east side, it was the Purple Line Extension, downtown, the Crenshaw Line. I advocated that as an equalization factor, cities that didn't have those type of projects be granted a pool of money. The name of that pool of money is the Subregional Highway Equity Fund because the only big expenses then in regions like ours at the time were highway improvements. Fast forward about nine years, again on the Metro Board, there was a decision to make that money available to all different types of modes of transportation, not just highways. So that is what opened up the funding for this particular request. Now, did I ask that it be pulled off the agenda? No. Did I make sure upon reading the report that this wouldn't be on until January, I think is what the report said? I did make a call after that and encouraged the Chair through her deputy staff to make sure that's back on. I don't know why it was taken off. The money's not gone. It's still there. I don't think it's going to delay this project, but I'm glad there's such an interest in the details of Metro. I'd be happy to give any more report as possible. Incidentally, since we're speaking of bike lanes, when the BRT was coming through, I advocated for $20 million of the funding to go towards bike lanes through this city. And that's, I'm quite proud of that, actually. Those are going to be running alongside the BRT, much of it being the Class 1 type of bike lane. So the money's there. I hope it doesn't delay the project. Council hasn't yet voted on what we're going to do, but that's the answer.
Okay. I mean, I would still like, and I think it would have to be you because you're our board representative, for you to ask and, and, and get an answer to why it was pulled off. It is a mystery. Had staff not been able to come up with an alternative sources of funds, and I understand they had to really scramble to do that, that could have delayed the project. It's, it's concerning and I for one would like to know why. And I think you're the only person that can get that answer because when staff reached out to the, the chief planning officer, they were told that we have to go through you. So I would like to formally request that you...
I'd like to speak.
Ask Mayor Bass why this was pulled off so that we can get, and I think we should get it in writing, get a clear explanation for what transpired so it will resolve any doubts any of us have.
Like an affidavit or something or just something in writing?
I think an email would be good enough.
Okay. And I'd like to speak to staff to make sure staff hear what staff had heard so we're all on the same page. Would that be Sarkis or Daniel or who?
So both Sarkis and, and I have contacted different Metro staff members. And based on what we were told is that they were still researching why it was, that they didn't have the reason of why it was pulled. That was their response to us. And in, in response to the item being placed on the January agenda, that's a conversation that I had with Mr. Sosa.
My most recent conversation with Mr. Sosa, Supervisor Han and Stephanie Wiggins while we were traveling is that it would be on the very next agenda. So we'll, I'll put that in writing.
Councilmember Garpetian, you had questions?
Yes. So just to, for point of clarification, above Shirley Jean area, there are both sides, there are bike lanes on both sides, five feet and three feet buffer, right?
North of Shirley Jean, Councilmember Garpetian?
North of Shirley Jean, yes.
North of...
When I say south, no, north.
You said, yeah. Five, five-foot bike lanes and predominantly a three-foot buffer.
And that buffer could be two feet on one side and one foot on the other side or vice versa.
Yeah, but we, we were able to, to look back and determine that the buffer is primarily on one side. And then when it transitions to a buffered bike lane, so not a protected bike lane, there's buffers on both sides for the most part.
So you have a parking spot at eight feet and a buffer. So the total buffer is three feet, one foot on one side, two feet on the other side or three feet and three feet?
Yep. Primarily three feet on one side. And then the eight, the, the bicycle lane and the parking in areas such as, for example, between Sycamore and Honolulu. On the west side, there's a parking, then a four-foot buffer, a bicycle lane, and then another four-foot buffer because the right-of-way is wider in that area. So we had to accommodate for that.
So you have eight foot and three, and the five foot is 13 feet for a bike lane?
In this instance, yes.
Right, okay. So on San Fernando Road, we, we recently installed bike lanes, right?
Yeah, for the, for the southbound direction only.
And how does that work? Because Councilmember Kusakian was asking about two-way bike lanes and, and I asked the same question on briefings and the question, the answer was when you have the, let's say if you're coming down, coming south on Lock Carson Avenue and the bike lane is on the right-hand side, going south is easier than coming back up because then you're going against the traffic and the traffic signals and crossing the streets and what have you. How would that work on San Fernando Road? How, how is it that it works on San Fernando Road and no other roads? To have bike lane on one side, for example? And this is a smaller one, right? It's not even a two-way bike lane. Am I correct? The one on San Fernando Road?
Correct. It's a one-directional bike lane. It was a decision that council made at the time we came to award that project. And it's only traveling southbound or eastbound from Grandview to Elk or Colorado. It does limit the reverse direction for bicyclists to be able to go, you know, northerly or westerly on that corridor. So it is limiting, but it is a one-directional bike lane that council had decided to put in.
Okay. And also I cannot find it somewhere in the report. I read that the delays would be on pick, pick hour times in the morning or in the afternoon. Some was nine minutes and the other one was four or five minutes. Can you elaborate on that?
Yeah, so in normal free flow conditions in post-project, it'll take approximately four minutes to get through the travel corridor at the average speeds that are expected to be decreased to. When you factor in the intersection delays, that also adds to the corridor delay. And depending on the average speed that in fact the traffic slows down to, it can range anywhere from seven minutes to nine minutes depending on that average speed.
Okay. And the last question was about backing out of the, backing up from the driveways. You mentioned that it would be, let's say, south of Shirley Jean, it would be a bike lane, protected bike lane, then the parking sidewalk, protected bike lane, then the parking, then they have to back into the one-lane traffic, right? Because they have to wait for the traffic to clear versus today, they want to back into the street. Upcoming traffic has a choice to move to the left and give them some right-of-way and then it, it flows better that way and it's less dangerous. But on, on this scenario, how, how do you see the safety issue backing out? I know they have more room, but as far as backing out of their driveways into one lane, how would that work? As far as engineering goes?
As far as engineering goes, I think this is more of a vehicle code question and enforcement of the vehicle code and people following the vehicle code. You'd have to yield to the traffic that's coming in that travel lane, whether you're backing out into single lane. You're still backing out into a single lane in the current configuration. It's just that there's a second lane, like you said, for other vehicles to, to change into. But of course, they'd have to make those changes safely. And again, abide by the speed limit, abide by the laws. And as, as, as the driver coming out of your driveway, you would also have to yield to oncoming traffic.
Okay. So can you give us a breakdown of the, the width of the bike lanes on each side? There are like two or three blocks that they're the same, same size, like south of Shirley Jean, they're all protected bike lanes. North of Shirley Jean, there are different sizes, right?
Yeah, so let's move from the corridor south and go north.
Okay.
That's predominantly going to be a five-foot bike lane, five to five and a half feet. It's going to be protected, which means that there's going to be a buffer on one side of it. And that buffer is going to be between the parking lane and the bicycle lane.
Okay.
So that you're clear of the door zone when, when people are opening their doors to come out of their cars, they don't interact with the bicyclists.
How wide is the buffer?
Three feet.
Three feet, okay.
And then as you travel northbound, when you pass Shirley Jean, there's a small segment where it becomes a, some, my apologies, it's the same thing. It's, it's a five-foot bike lane with a three-foot buffer.
And those are protected bike lanes?
Protected bike lanes.
North of Shirley Jean?
Yes, Shirley Jean to Glenwood. It's approximately 700 feet.
Okay.
And then from Glenwood to Sycamore, which is again a smaller portion. And this is predominantly due to the, the lane width of the right-of-way shifting. So Glenwood to Sycamore is about 400 feet. You have a bicycle, you have a parking lane on the east side along the curb. And then you have a bike lane without a buffer because the right-of-way is limiting. And then the, the transitions are also factors here. And then on the west side, you have the protected bike lane similar to how the rest of the corridor is as we've been traveling northbound. And then as you go further north, Sycamore to Honolulu, so Honolulu is a major intersection. That's a, that's a small portion there. It becomes a parking lane and then a bicycle lane of five feet and then a buffer of three feet. And then on the west side was what I was alluding to earlier. It's a buffered bike lane that has buffers on both sides of the bike lane. So it's parking, then a buffer, then parking, then buffer.
And those are the four-foot buffers?
Correct. And then finally, from Honolulu to Montrose, it is a parking lane, a bike lane, and then a striped buffer, not a delineated raised buffer with K-71s on both sides.
So the other buffers are delineated, they're raised?
No, they have raised elements in them. So the K-71...
Okay.
And this is predominantly because there is transit in this area that stops. And so we had to also accommodate the bus pads and, and the bus stops.
Okay.
Can I, can I ask a follow-up question on that? I think when we looked at the North Brand project, I had seen like one video of an SUV going through the bike lane.
Some areas are wider.
So S, I mean SUVs, and then I had to go look up the width of SUVs because I was trying to figure out like how an SUV would actually fit into a bike lane. Could we end up in any similar situation? I mean, when I looked it up, it said compact are six feet and then it goes from six to seven. And so now I'm not, my gauge meter is not for SUVs, it's just for cars in general. And if someone wants to be that, trying to figure out what fits into this bike lane and the width that you've recommended. And what are the possibilities of other things except bike lanes and maybe scooters going down?
Mayor Sartian, the bike lane on North Brand is eight feet wide, so that can accommodate a car. And there's only one portion of it at the southern portion where a car could get in right past the bus stop. We were trying to accommodate the bus stop. So because that lane is so wide, that's why an SUV was able to get in there. On the bike lanes in this project, they're at most five and a half feet wide. There's a portion where it's only six feet wide. So, and there's also raised elements next to it and a car wouldn't be able to get in. I mean, depending on what kind of a car we're talking about, like a little Mini Cooper, but it'd be very difficult for them to do that as easily as they did on Brand.
So the raised element is how thick, how much is it raised from the ground?
So they're, they're, they're about 12-inch wide semi-permanent flexible posts with reflective markings on them. And they're about, I'd say 30 to 40 inches high. Don't quote me on that. But they're about two to, two to four feet, two to, two to three feet, more or less.
No, my, no, I think I asked my question the wrong way. If you have a bike lane, then you have the buffer zone, right? You have a buffer of three or four feet between that bike lane and the, the buffer zone. Is there a raised element between the two?
No.
It's flat?
Yeah, what I meant is, what I meant was the raised elements are those K-71s, the, the flexible posts. They're the raised elements that come above the pavement.
Right, so those are the, those are the barriers, basically.
Correct.
Okay, so between, like if you go to north, a four feet and a five feet and a four feet, that's about 13 feet and it's, it's flat, right?
Yes, that one does not...
And there's no, there is no raised element over there either?
No, there isn't.
Okay, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay. Given that there are no more questions, do you, do my colleagues have additional comments they'd like to make before we take a vote?
I would.
Councilmember Kusakian?
So I want to just point out that there's been a lot of talk about how people are not opposed to bike lanes, but they don't want a lane removed as well as some concerns about how this will impact first responder response times by our fire department and our police department. And I, I want to just say that a lot of time has been spent on this by individuals whose whole careers and lives are focused on these particular issues that none of us up here are experts on, have studied, have researched, have compared to see how we improve safety. But the people, some of the people who have are from the Federal Highway Administration. And so on one of their, in one of their documents, it says, you know, they use the term road diets, but they call it, they have it under the heading Mythbusters. They address the issue of whether lane removals will impact the times to help get to an emergency. And it says, contrary to popular belief, road diets do not degrade response times for law enforcement and emergency services. Instead, one simple road diet feature can actually improve response times, the two-way left-turn lane, which is actually what is being proposed here if I'm not mistaken, a middle both ways turning lane. Is that correct, Mr. Oganessian?
That is correct.
Yes. So multi-lane undivided roads can be problematic for police and EMS responders as drivers may not be aware of protocols for allowing emergency vehicles to pass. While drivers in the outside travel lane are typically able to pull over to the right edge, drivers in the inside lanes often seem uncertain about where to go. I've seen this happen in Glendale on streets, on roads like Glen Oaks where during a very busy time, all lanes of traffic are occupied and our emergency vehicles have to go into opposing traffic where hopefully there is no... all lanes of traffic are occupied and our emergency vehicles have to go into opposing traffic where hopefully there is no um uh uh traffic and to make it through. So emergency responders may struggle to pass through the traffic as they thread a path somewhere along the center of the roadway, leading to longer response times and increasing the opportunity for secondary incidents during response. It says, in contrast, three-lane roadways, including those in road diets, provide clarity in the event of an emergency. Road diets can significantly improve response times by allowing emergency vehicles to bypass traffic by using, and it says T W L T L, which stands for Two Way Left Turn Lane. Driver, drivers in through lanes can remain in place, leaving the middle lane solely for emergency response vehicles. So I I understand people are hesitant, concerned, may have some fears, but I I can, having heard from folks, including a lot of people, uh, this morning, there was at Fremont Elementary School, an unveiling of of this uh very um community-oriented project where they replanted a number of uh drought tolerant and local plants, as well as they buried a time capsule, it was a very nice event, and I had an opportunity to hear from multiple families. Uh, everyone is concerned about the high speeds that cars travel um on that stretch of road. And I myself have seen it numerous times, uh, as I've mentioned before, because I have family that lives up there, I drive up there mul- multiple times a week. And the video is exactly what you see there on a regular basis. People think it's the Autobahn, um, they have little to no regard, sometimes blowing through um traffic signals. What I would say is that um I would have liked, I I may have been swayed to consider a test project if the cost wasn't so high. But given that the cost is eight hundred thousand dollars and I anticipate it actually will probably end up being more than eight hundred thousand dollars because I've yet to see, uh, I can probably count on one hand the number of uh public works, not public works specifically, but uh improve, capital improvement projects in the city that come under budget. Um, in fact, uh, you know, the library youth center being one example. I am for supporting this to move forward as it was proposed by staff with staff's recommendation to just go ahead and do the changes that you have come as professionals who have done the research and work uh to make that stretch of road safer for everyone. Um, so those are my comments and uh I would be happy to support uh this moving forward.
All right, who's next?
I could.
Sure.
Um. So um, yes, we are not experts up here on this diet, so we do um rely a lot on on our uh our staff. Um, but um, like Mr. Kasakian, I decided to uh look at some of the research that's out there on uh these types of projects. And um, I've been playing around with Chat G P T a little bit. And I found Chat G P T is very good at pulling up all the studies on a particular topic and giving little summaries of them. So I actually uh, I asked about research in this in this area and I was given, oh boy, let me see, seven, eight studies. Um, that occurred over a period of time, including the one that I think uh Councilmember Kasakian, you referred to as by the Federal Highway Administration. Um, but there's another one by the uh National Cooperative Highway Research Program. Um, there's another one by University of California, Berkeley, Journal of Transportation Research Board on road diets, um, Iowa Department of Transportation, Texas A and M Transportation Institute, City of Seattle, University of Colorado, Denver. Those are the ones that it gave me and uh these studies um are all pretty consistent. Um, what they conclude is that um going from four lanes, like we have a Locorzena, to three lanes, to in either direction, plus a center turn lane, um, is um an effective way to uh reduce collisions, make roads safer. And they have little, maybe some, I won't say none, but little impact on travel times. Um, and little to no impact uh on emergency response times. The caveat is that you need to pick the right road to do this. Uh, you wouldn't do it on a road with very high traffic volumes. But Locorzena Avenue really is the classic case of the type of road that's suitable for a road diet. It has low traffic counts, um, it's wide, um, and um you know, and it's got high collision rates. Um, we saw from staff, um, previously, they they presented to us data on collisions. And since twenty ten, I believe it is, there have been a hundred and seventy-five collisions on this corridor. Staff's analysis also tells us that um this type of a treatment going from four lanes to three lanes will reduce collisions by an estimated thirty percent. And I wrote that down, that's ninety-two crashes over twenty years. Um, and I know this seems like a big number, but crashes do cost a lot when you take into account all the emergency response times, it's not just about the car, uh, all the emergency response that goes into um um dealing with a crash. Uh, the estimated savings from these avoided crashes over twenty years is seventeen million dollars. So this is very significant. Um, and a lot of this, again, is from the ha- the fact that we have that center turn lane. The experience will also improve for bikes. Some people have said, you know, this is a bike project disguised as a safety project, or a safety project disguised as a bike project, it's both. It's both, it's going to reduce speeding, it's going to make the corridor safer, and it's going to provide a place for bikes to travel up and down safely. And there are many people that bike, but there are many more that would like to bike. And as Councilmember Kasakian said, we were at Fremont Elementary and we heard from parents who said exactly that. You know, I would love to be able to come and bike with my kids to school. I hate pulling in with a car and having to deal with all that craziness during drop-offs and pickups, but I don't feel safe. And this would make it safe. And this is something I think we we owe the community, to make it safe and to make it safe for all modes of transportation. So um, there will be some loss of parking. And and I do understand, you know, the Avocian's families, you know, concerns about that. Fortunately, um, we are, we have um, uh, how, what's the right terminology? I guess we have low parking utilization right now, it's about sixty percent. Um, typically, we target about eighty percent utilization, that's about, and when you go over eighty percent, you start to feel the stress of not being able to find a parking spot, if I remember right from our discussions on parking. Um, we're at about sixty percent, we will have, we will lose some parking, about eighteen percent. But it still keeps us below eighty. So I think it's an environment where we can afford to lose that parking. Will it slow down the time it takes? I mean, will it take somebody longer to go from one end to the other during peak hours? Yes, I think it will, because people will be traveling slower, they'll be traveling the speed limit. And I think that's a good thing. So um, there will be some costs, yes, parking, slower travel times, but it's really worth it. When you think of the crashes that are gonna be avoided, the lives are gonna be saved and the people that are gonna be able to get around safely and comfortably on a bike. I I want to address, um, you know, a few things, I I've heard a lot from people, they say, well, if you wanna slow down traffic, just reduce the speed limit. There are two problems with that. One is, we don't have the legal authority to just reduce the speed limit as we would like to, that's regulated by the state. There's some flexibility we have in recent legislation, but it's very, very limited. So the idea that we can just reduce the speed limit is is not realistic. Should we reduce the speed limit? It will have limited effect if the road is designed for speeding. And there was a gentleman, I think he left, he he spoke earlier and he said, it feels like a freeway, so people drive like it's a freeway. And we know from research that people will drive to the design speed of the road. If a road has wide lanes, if a road has multiple lanes, people will drive fast, just naturally, right? Doesn't mean they're bad people, they will just naturally feel like the road, like it's safe and they will drive faster. So reducing speed limits is not really an approach that is gonna work. Um, we heard somebody else talk about put up signage. You know, we've all tried in many different ways, putting up signage, slow down, be a good citizen, you know, um, maybe I'm cynical, but that just doesn't work. Um, you can tell people to do the right thing again and again, but if the road is saying speed, if the road feels like it's saying speed, people will speed, no matter what you tell them. And finally, enforcement, you know, yes, if we could put an officer on every, every block and have them there twenty-four seven, yes, maybe that would do the trick, we can't afford that, folks. I mean, and we couldn't even find the people if we wanted to spend the money to do that. We already spend uh what percentage of our budget on um public safety? I think it's two-thirds of our general fund budget already is on public safety. It's just not, it's not realistic that we can have police everywhere, all the time. Um, and we know that as soon as they're gone, behavior reverts back. So it is about design, it is about engineering, and we have to take roads that are overdesigned, over-engineered for the amount of traffic that they get, and we have to fix them. And we have to start being being willing to make these changes that we know from all of our studies will make the road safer and will have very little impact on uh travel times. So I am very much in support of this. Um, I'll just say one more thing, I hear people talk about two years since we approved this, it's actually four years since I think notifications went out uh on this project when the public outreach began, four years. It was right when I came on council. It's gonna take another year or more to get this thing built, that's over five years for one road segment. That's probably one of the easiest in Glendale, because it's one of the most obvious candidates for this type of a treatment. We have got to figure out how to do this more expeditiously. But in any case, I don't wanna see any further delays, we need to make this happen and we need to improve the safety for all road users. So I will second if, Councilmember Kasakian, did you make a motion?
Not yet.
Okay, well, um, I'll let you make the motion and when you do, I'll second it.
I'm I'm hoping, yes, so um, Mr. Najarian, then Mr. Garpetian, and I'm not saying this for this item moving forward, but for either one of you, I'm just asking my colleagues to, moving forward in future meetings, to please talk about what's in front of us. We, the comments and the questions that were asked today were addressed during the the last meeting uh when we were actually approving the the design and the elements of this project. What's in front of us today is a resolution, uh, and a couple of resolutions for the, like, approving and not approving that the R F P process. And what it feels like is a whole discussion all over again on an item that has thoroughly been discussed for, I guess, four years and two years. So please, um, for the sake of moving the meetings forward, um, I'm kindly asking that you please stick to the items that are in front of us and not turn items into larger discussions that have, we've already had in previous meetings. And I'm saying for future meetings, just so, you know, please go ahead and speak however much and however, whatever you want. So I don't, I don't want anyone to think that I'm trying to stop, but I was trying to stop Councilmember Bratman, but he was on a roll, so. All right, so so this does not apply, feel free to say whatever, you know, just please be mindful of what's in front of us moving forward, thank you.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have some comments, uh, and these are comments that uh were not made ever before. And unfortunately, the young kids who spoke so eloquently were not here, maybe they could learn a little something on the process. So as we're discussing this, the question is, how do we make decisions on the council? What is our guidance? What is our north star when we make policy decisions? In large part, we follow our general plan. And Glendale's general plan is a policy document that establishes the city's vision for future development and provides a direction for growth. It's a long-range plan that reflects the community's values and priorities and includes goals, policies, and actions to achieve the community's vision. The general plan is the foundation for all land use decisions in the city and it is similar to our constitution, as in the U S Constitution, for development. The general plan shapes and guides the physical development of the city and it outlines how the city will evolve. It also embodies public policy regarding the distribution of future land use. And as I said, Glendale does have a general plan. A significant component of the general plan is the circulation element, you may have heard that. Glendale has a circulation element that has a circulation plan, which talks about our roads. Now, someone had mentioned that uh Locorzena feels like a, like a freeway. So as a matter of fact, as a matter of fact, Glendale has set the priorities, the hierarchies of roadways. Number one are freeways. Just a notch below that are major arterials. A notch below that, minor arterials. Below that, urban collectors. Below that, community collectors. Then neighborhood collectors and the lowest local streets. Folks, Glendale has classified Locorzena Avenue as a major arterial. That's the way it's classified. And what is a major arterial? A major arterial has a definition. Major arterials are characteristically the widest from four to six lanes of urban streets and carry the heaviest traffic volumes, up to forty-five thousand vehicles per day. And I'm reading from our very own circulation element, our blueprint for roadways in the city. Major arterials generally provide motorists with the most continuous, efficient routes throughout the city. Since traffic signals, parking limitations, and prohibitions and access are utilized to maximize traffic flow. Major arterials distribute traffic to freeways, other arterials, collectors, and other major traffic generators within and outside the city. They also serve regional traffic between adjacent cities and are generally truck routes, corridors of high transit service, and patronage. That is our label on Locorzena Avenue. Now, Locorzena Avenue wasn't always a major arterial. It was a small two-lane road, similar to what many of you have spoken out your desire it to return to. But that was before the two-ten freeway was built and completed in the early nineteen seventies. And in the early nineteen seventies, when the two-ten was completed and the off-ramps on Locorzena were completed, the precursor to Caltrans, uh, I forget what it was called, the Highway Commission or something, dictated that Locorzena Avenue be upgraded from two-lane or something dictated that La Crisena Avenue be upgraded from two lanes to four lanes. And what we've heard today and throughout is that this really isn't a bike plan. It's a traffic calming plan. We want to slow vehicles down. We have a, a rule of thumb for that also in our constitution for development. It says that traffic calming techniques are applicable to community and neighborhood connectors and local streets. In other words, you don't put traffic calming devices on major arterials. That's my problem with this project. It's not bike lanes. As I said before, I've supported bike lanes. I've supported biking. Next week, we're going to talk about an open streets event that Metro is providing funding for, that everyone supports. It's a bike party. The BRT is going to have several miles of dedicated bike lanes. My problem is that we're putting it, this project, on a major arterial designed to have the most efficient and most fluid traffic in our system. We don't have major, we don't have many major arterials in Glendale. We've just got a handful, a handful. La Crisena is one of them. So to put traffic calming on our major arterial, I believe, is a mistake. By the way, the decision by the precursor to Caltrans to make us, and they might have even paid for the increase of lanes on La Crisena from two, two lanes to four lanes, was 50 years ago. And you can imagine how the population has increased from 1970 till today. I don't have the numbers. I should ask AI or something, but it's probably, if not doubled, close to doubled in our region. That's one of my major problems with this. The next problem that I have is I don't believe we have followed the state fire code. State fire code says, section 503, point four, point one, "Traffic calming devices shall be prohibited unless approved by the fire chief." I have not heard the fire chief come to speak in any of these discussions. There's nothing in the report about the fire chief approving this. In fact, the closest we had to testimony from a fire official was Battalion Chief Gano speaking about the North Brand Lane Reduction, Traffic Calming, and he said it absolutely makes response time worse. That's all I've heard. I don't know where Chief, Chief Fish is, but we're violating the state fire code and I gave you the site and maybe you've read this and all that, and maybe he signed off on it, but we didn't know about it. But we should not be going forward until we follow the state law on that. That's my second issue. My third issue is we're being asked to pick a contractor and negotiate with a contractor. Let's, let's put that in context. We did an RFP for bids and qualifications out into the public, the development world, and we got answers from three of them. Each and every one of them had to be rejected because they were not qualified to do the That's what the report says. But now staff is saying, despite them being not qualified and not being able to take their bids, let's go back and negotiate with these three unqualified contractors. And unqualified is a term of art. Doesn't mean that they don't, that they haven't been in business a long time, doesn't mean that they're not licensed, but it means that for the requirements we put out several months ago, they're not qualified. Well, that's a problem I have. We're going back, I mean, is it a joke? We set standards, nobody meets the standards. We go back to the same group that didn't meet those standards and we try and find a solution with them. So that is my third problem. My fourth problem is clearly the community has talked about the speed issue. And that's, unfortunately, as I've done my research, La Crisena is designed for speeds up to 62 miles an hour. That's also in our constitution, in the circulation element. How do we slow them down without using traffic calming? And I think the answer, we were talking about, sort of dancing around it, is let's put speed cameras there. We are, we are a test, we are a pilot city for those speed cameras. Laura Friedman, whose name was brought up earlier, included Glendale, specially included Glendale to do that. So if we want to cut speeding, we don't need an officer there. He doesn't have to get on his motorcycle and track them down and license registration. This is an automated system, which once people realize that, hey, La Crisena is a no-speed zone, there's no doubt in my mind that that's going to lower the speeding. So those are my four reasons. And again, just to sum it up, I'm not against bike lanes, but La Crisena Avenue is the wrong place for it. All those folks at Fremont, there's a whole myriad grid of nice, local streets through Spar Heights where kids can come and, and ride to Fremont. La Crisena Avenue, our major arterial, designed to take the freeway traffic to get us from North Glendale to South Glendale, just isn't the right street. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Garpetian?
How many hours do I have?
You know, I gave up three hours ago.
That's all right, that's all right.
Waving the white flag.
Yeah, no, no problem, no problem. Well, this project was approved and budgeted for before I got elected. So any delays in this project, I know there is a big movement that they can label people and point finger at each other or what have you. Any delays in this project has nothing to do with me. I was asked to make comments and I will make my comments. And I want to go on the record and just voice my opinion about the issues that we talked about here today and the issues that I think is going to affect the quality of life for people who live on that street and surrounding. First of all, the assertion that the, this project will reduce the collisions and it might, of course. You slow, you shove 5,600 cars instead of two lanes into one lane, of course, it will slow down the traffic. It will create traffic. But look at Brand Boulevard. I'd like to see how many, how many accidents did we have on Brand Boulevard so far? Of course, they're not major accidents, they're fender benders, but I would like to get that number. That would tell you, that would give you a lot of data on as to what this project will do in five years. How many people will use the, the bike lanes in the future? As far as the accidents goes, I think we have to stop making these grandiose assumptions when we want to make a point. The data is there. This street, this stretch of La Crisena Avenue handles 10,600 cars a day, 5,600, am I correct? 10,200 cars a day, 5,600 on each side. Or 11? What was the number that you gave me? How many, what's the traffic count on this stretch? 5,600 on each side?
It's approximately 11,500.
11,500, thank you. So 11,500 a day, it's over 300,000 cars a month. And when you have eight accidents or 10 accidents, that are not injury accidents, that there is no fatality and doesn't involve any cyclist and doesn't involve any, any pedestrian, you cannot just assume, oh, this is the most dangerous street in, in Glendale. And I voiced my opinion about Glendale being the very dangerous city to driving or, or living or walking or biking. In the past, I don't want to go around the same, same numbers. So you have to measure this number of accidents to number of cars that are on that road. Those number of cars, even if they go down by 10% within five years, you're still going to have 10,000 cars on that road, which is accommodating, accommodated by one lane on each side. Mr. Najarian tried to, you know, go around the legal ways of saying why this, this project is not the right project, but I'm trying to come across as a, as a cyclist that rides his bike every week. And I haven't crossed one cyclist at the same time on the same side of the street. So my goal for this project would be, not delay, you can do all the infrastructure work, you can do all the work, but I believe you can put the, the bike lane on one side, protected bike lane on one side. And bear in mind, what are you trying to create here? It already exists on, on Oceanview. When you go north of Shirley Jean, none of these lanes are protected. They're five feet with buffer, but a car, if it's, if it's not paying attention and it's, it's going to enter into that bike lane, you're going to have issues. What you're creating here, it already exists on Oceanview Avenue. And be honest, and we have to be honest with each other and see how many people are on that road, because it's very a good place to ride. It's stop and go every, every intersection has a traffic light or a stoplight. And it starts from Redugo Road, goes all the way up to, if I'm not mistaken, to Montrose. So it's pretty much the same stretch. As far as we have to reduce the number of cars, we have to get people out of their cars, we have to, we have to, look, you can't stop, you can't stop progress. We have 200,000 people who visit our city every day on daily basis. And based on our numbers, our metro numbers and also the B-line numbers, 99% of them drive to Glendale. And they drive a long way. That's our, our vehicle miles traveled in Glendale is over 1.2 billion miles. That was in our, our climate action plan ordinance. 1.2 billion miles, not all of them are from Glendale, but that calculates people who come to Glendale. And you know, the, kind of the scary part is the way they, they come up with that number is they pin your, your cell phone. They pin your cell phone, they don't know who you are, but they know who, how many people come in, how much they drive from point A to point B. So that's why they came up with that number. I don't know why everybody's against the quick build. I think the quick build will tell us a lot. If it's just the cost, I'm sure some people who used to work for SCAG, they can get some funding for us from SCAG or some grants from SCAG to build that quick, quick build. While we're doing the project, like we did on Brand Boulevard, right? It was mostly supported by, by, by SCAG. And, and I, I gotta tell you, the way that it's designed right now, some areas have protected lanes on each side, some areas have protected lane on one side, some areas have wider lanes on one side, some areas have narrower lane on, on the other side. I think we need to take a look at the option that if you put a bike lane on one side wide enough to accommodate the, and protected one, I think we can do that and, and still do the project, still implement all the safety, safety issues that we want to implement there. All the traffic, traffic lights change, everything that, that we want to do, I think we can accomplish. But as I always mention, I am not in support of, of any project that removes traffic lanes and parking spaces. It's a, it's a, you know, the problem is we have to understand each other's lifestyles. And you say, well, we lose some parking spaces, it's okay, it's worth it. It's worth it for who? Not for me, not for us. We keep saying us, we need to do, we have to, we have to, not, not for me. I, I bet you anything, if you put this on the ballot, that bicycle transportation plan, it will not pass. It will not pass. I bet you anything. If you put the Bicycle Master Plan that we passed last week, if you put it on the ballot, it will not pass. It is a, it is a lifestyle. This gentleman was speaking here, when you take street parking, it's not just when you have parties or you have guests. Every time you come home, you know, I live in a dead-end street, we have a lot of parking on our street. But if you're on that road, you can't park across the street and you have two kids or three kids, they're all grown, they're driving, they have to go to school, they have to go to work, they can't ride or bike their work to, to, to West LA to go to work or go to UCLA. So they need a spot to park. And when you take that many spaces away, it's, it's not right. And also, I want to just close by saying, the number of collisions and fatalities, thank God for that. We don't have any cyclist that was hit on that area. We don't have any, as far as the report that I have in front of me, maybe 50 years ago, something happened, I don't know, don't hold me against that. But the number of cyclists and pedestrians that we had, all, every, every incident that we had did not involve cyclists and pedestrians and thank God for that. So, I don't know, I, I can read the writing on the wall, I know how the votes are going to go. And again, this project was approved in the past. And one other thing that's very important for the future projects, the public outreach cannot be done this way. When you approve 90% of the project, then you go to public and this guy calls and says, how come you're removing the street parking in front of my house? And 90% of the project is approved and you're moving forward, we're trying to do an RFP, that was, and every flyer that goes out to the residents, we have to mention what this project does. When I receive a flyer that says, well, it's for bike safety, pedestrian safety, traffic improvement, of course, who's against that? But you don't tell them you're removing the traffic lane and you're not telling them that you're removing the parking spots in front of their houses. And this wasn't done. No one can tell, I, I have those flyers. And there was not a word to that effect. So with that, I know from next week, we've got to keep it short, right? That was, didn't apply to this week.
You know, like God's a dream.
Yeah. So with that, I, that, that's where I stand. I think we need to do the quick build. I think it will tell us a lot and I'm not for removing any traffic lanes or parking spaces.
Right.
Okay.
So I'm not going to speak to this project. If you'd like my comments on this project, please refer to the October 18, 2024 meeting of the Glendale City Council when this item was actually discussed. I will address a couple of items that were mentioned by my colleagues and by some community members. Number one, those that are claiming that enforcement's going to be the key to this instead of the lanes. Our own police department held a town hall just this last week, along with our public works. And the continuous theme during that town hall was that enforcement or engineering or education do not work alone. They, they go hand in hand. So it's not a matter of just increasing enforcement or just engineering. Those things have to be together. And this is really re-engineering a street. There were some comments made that noted that this might be an artery street. And I know that it was put so eloquently, but I would like, and I've asked this from staff previously, that when we are bringing items for it, to also the items and the report to refer to some of our grander plans that we have. So there is no confusion. So what I would like is, I did send over our, to our city clerk, two points. I'd like for you to pull up the first one. Folks, this is our general plan that was adopted in 2011. It's chapter four of our general plan, which is the North Glendale Community Plan. This was done, the latest and the most current, was done in 2011. And it speaks to La Crisena Avenue. And it says, implement a bikeway past master pla, I'm not going to read the whole thing and I can't see very well. So it was talking about improvements and La Crisena, it was not referring to, to that. And then I don't know how often we bring how often we bring those back, but if you can go to the next one, the next picture that I had sent. So these were the folks that were on the council when this North Glendale Community Plan was adopted. And so just for the record, I I think it's important for everyone to know. The last couple of weeks, I've been trying to be responsive to our, you can close that. I've been trying to be responsive to our residents who are asking about the bicycle plan. And the number of residents that have been writing has been an amount that I physically can't get to without any staff support. I've talked to our city manager also about perhaps creating an email where staff also receives. It's it's one thing when a constituent is trying to reach out to me directly or Councilmember Garpetian or whatnot. But what we're seeing is an increase in community involvement. Even just on this Locker Center project, the number of people that have written to me actually in support of this project, and I think along with my colleagues, I tried to forward this on to our city clerks, our Director of Public Works, as well as our city manager, for them to have it. But I do think it's important for us to have an email address that's available to the public aside from our personal work emails at the city as as each council member or mayor that allows for staff to have access to those. So we're able to also track the number of people that are coming and and writing in on these. And again, without staff support, you know, I mean, responding to hundreds and hundreds of emails that especially come in at the last minute is just nearly impossible with everything else that we have to do. And so I'm putting in the request officially to to have that done. And what the reason I bring this up is because Councilmember Garpetian, you just mentioned again, the bicycle plan. And I'm gonna reiterate, we didn't approve a bicycle plan for the city. We did not approve a bicycle plan. What we approved is for staff to go and do the SEQA and for them to come back. And even then, I, you and I have had this conversation both here on the dais and privately. If I saw what you refer to as crayons all over our city and I saw a 500 million tag, I also would oppose that plan. But recommending that or suggesting that we have approved that is not doing any service to a community and a city that doesn't have the correct information. And we're we're continuing to feed the information that has been put out instead of. And I I've asked our city manager and our community development director to put out some educational material on what it is because I'm really tired of us having to respond to these things instead of it being proactive community outreach and engagement. And so with the item that's in front of us, I support you moving forward with alternative one.
I was going to make the motion to approve a resolution rejecting all bids, suspending with the competitive bidding and authorizing negotiation of a contract for the amount of $14,750,000 plus a contingency for the Locker Center Avenue Rehabilitation Project and plus the resolution for appropriating and providing adequate funding for the project as staff recommended.
Can I second that? I think that's eight, eight, one and three.
Can I ask a clarification question?
Sure.
So if staff come back in a week and say, we found a grant that will pay for the quick build, would you, would you, would you be all for it?
I don't think that's, I don't think that's before us. And I don't know why staff would be able to do that.
It's part of the motion.
But no, you're saying if staff does that.
Yeah, they go out and get grants for different projects all the time.
So there's two aspects of that. One is that I think that there's, as Mr. Mohol even suggested, there's better ways of spending that money. The purpose of my inquiry was to see if it could be done with just basic traffic cones. They are saying it must be done with restriping. Again, Mr. Garpetian, neither you nor I are traffic engineers nor specialists in this. So I am deferring to the staff that we've hired, who is paid to do the research and bring forth their recommendations, some of whom live in the city, who are raising their families in the city and who believe this is in the best interest of the city. I made my motion. Let's move on. Thank you.
I have one.
I just, okay, you all have made your comments.
Yeah, but it's something you said about me.
I didn't say anything about you, Councilmember Najarian.
You had a big yellow thing around my name.
I didn't have it under your name. I had it around the council that was there at the time.
I was right in the middle.
I really, Councilmember Najarian, I, I respectfully, were you not on the council during 2011?
The implication is that I'm flip flopping my position. And I just want to point out that the plan that you read from was for class two bike lanes.
Okay, do we want to go now back to the October 18 meeting and watch what your comments were during the October 18 meeting on this project? And were they part of the same comments that you made during the time that the 2011 general plan, Chapter Four, was established?
You pulled my name out, Mayor. I'm just defending myself.
Okay, so no, I'm, well, go ahead, tell me.
I'm just telling you.
Tell me, no, no, tell me, please, tell me. Tell me, so if I go back to October 18, if I go back to October 18 and I go back to 2011, it's the same comments?
The screen that you put up, if it's a question, I'll answer it. The screen that you put up said council supported a class two bike lane on Locker Center Avenue. I was part of the council. Thank you.
Okay, I'm happy to pull up the videos and bring them back so we can have a larger conversation. Thank you. Do we have a, can we get roll call, please?
Was there a second?
Yes, I seconded.
Councilmembers, Brotman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
No.
Kazakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
No.
Mayor Asatrian?
Yes. Next. No clapping, you guys.
Next is the is discussion of Councilmember Future Agenda Requests. A Councilmember Najarian's request to agendize a discussion of a council policy regarding unsolicited proposals for development on city-owned property.
It pretty much speaks for itself. I think council should be aware of any proposals that come in at the staff level that are significant that we should know about.
I don't disagree.
I also agree, but can you please explain to me? I mean, my understanding is you guys do come when there's some serious proposal and an actual proposal, those things come to us during closed session.
That is correct, Mayor Asatrian. They, from time to time, there are conversations that happen between potential developers, potential proposers with the city manager or Director of Community Development. Most of them don't result or end up in a proposal. But as soon as we do get a proposal, we're obligated to bring, agendize it in closed session and bring it to council's attention and receive direction.
I mean, there's many that I never knew of. The Arowan, for one instance, the Omni Hotel. If it comes, let's just have a policy that you should share it with council. Even if that's what you are currently doing in an unofficial policy, let's just make it an official policy.
Councilmember Najarian, I don't disagree with an official policy, but examples of Arowan, again, not to be argumentative, but that wasn't a unsolicited proposal. It was a private transaction. And as soon as we found out, they didn't want that particular case. They didn't want any public notification until the escrow was closed. That was their policy.
Who's your allegiance, to your council or to a private developer?
But that was a private transaction.
That was a private transaction.
Did you know about it? You knew about it before we did. We should know these things.
I found out about it in the paper, so.
That's what I'm saying. We should know these things.
But I think, so I think there is a difference between the private transactions and any conversations or unsolicited proposals that are coming to staff. And again, my understanding was that we have that process. If we, if you wanna, if if my colleagues want an additional policy, then I'm happy to have that. But I'm just.
So you want to. That's our practice, but you know, again, I I don't disagree with having a written policy if that's council's direction.
In the motion to second to agenda.
This is something that needs to be agendized. I think I think staff got the message that, you know, where where it's appropriate, larger, more impactful proposals. I think you now know to bring them to us in our monthly one on ones. And that's good enough for me.
No, no. Madam Mayor, I would also say conversely, if council members hear of projects, they should share the information that they have received with staff immediately. I can tell you that I had heard rumors about Arowan coming months before, and I wasn't really sure. I let staff know that this is something that I've heard. Do you guys know anything about it? Is it something council should know about? Is there any validity to the rumor? So I I get that, you know, Councilmember Najarian is concerned about perhaps being caught flat footed, as I am, when there are these stories, rumors of people going to a local church and saying, hey, we're gonna build the development. But Councilmember Najarian, in all fairness, I mean, I remember when I wasn't on council, you, I believe, you were, but I had heard rumors about a group of developers approaching the city and others about student housing on that site. It was a group of overseas developers. I don't know what came of it. And I entrusted again staff to be able to provide the appropriate information to council at the appropriate time. So.
That was presented, but not the most recent.
I don't recall that entirely, but I'm just saying, I think it should be a two way. We we all need to communicate better.
Which which most recent one, Councilmember? With three buildings. We don't have a proposal, as I indicated, Mr. Calvert indicated. There was just a conversation. When they come, and we have these conversations, we share with them the challenges. And that one example that they need to secure parking for the church regardless. Now, they take it upon themselves to to go and talk to those neighboring adjacent property owners or establishments, that's on them. There is no proposal.
Look, if we're going back to the church property, I mean, I've got, I've had residents approach me asking what it's something, someone somewhere out there is talking. And it seems like, I don't know, you know, and again, I'm not gonna assume that it's the person or company that is looking to develop something there. But somebody's talking and spreading information and so. But again, I don't like doing like knee jerk reaction policy and adding things to our list.
And again, thank you, Mayor Asatrian. I have to reiterate what I indicated last time. Verbally, I had brought this up, mentioned it to all the council members, with the exception of Councilmember Garpetian, that there there was a developer that contemplated, who had conversation with Director of Community Development regarding a potential project at that site.
Okay.
And I did get feedback from all of you.
Okay.
I won't push it down. I don't think council's interested in that sort of information being passed on to them by by firm policies.
But it is, it is part of policy for them to bring it.
I I don't think that is an accurate statement. I just think that if there's, I don't want to create a policy that doesn't necessarily serve a clear purpose or may complicate the tasks that staff already has before them. If there is a way to simply convey to staff, and I believe the message has been received loud and clear, that when they receive information, when there's news of a big transaction potentially happening to tell us about it, that is important and I think for us to know about. I don't know, I'm not, I don't know if it's important enough for us to memorialize it into a written, I mean, I don't know. Mr. Garcia, what what would you recommend in a situation like this? What is the duty of staff as it pertains to council in something that's still in the ether and isn't really materialized?
Councilmember Kazakian, I don't think there's any legal requirement one way or the other. I mean, obviously, the city manager, you know, as he noted and all the prior city managers I've worked with, when there's information that has to be shared with council, it's shared with the council and all the council. And it's really up to the council to decide whether or not to have a formal written policy.
And I think the the communication is something that can be discussed during the evaluation of the city manager and any other pertinent staff. Again, I understand the concerns regarding this. But you know, what comes to mind is when Nestle left town, right? There were individuals in the community who obviously had information about it before we did. I remember hearing about it from some parents that my child was in daycare with their kids. And I let staff know about it. I said, I just heard something like this. Is there any validity to it? And I think that's incumbent on all of us. It's our duty as leaders in this city to do that. I would hope that staff would feel the same way in informing all of us when there is news of something that they feel rises to that level of importance. Thank you.
And I agree not to belabor.
I think we're going into discussion.
Just one last, please, thing that I agree with you. And as soon as I do have that kind of information, I do share with all the council members. I don't pick any particular ones. But sometimes when those news come to us, they come under the premise of confidentiality. Now, you know, it could be that an employee works at a company who's associated with this firm and they find out before we do. That's, I can't help that. But as long as, as as long as it's not confidential and we are told that it's not confidential, I'll share those with council members. And I'll make sure I'll I'll share them.
And for the record, do we have any unsolicited proposals for?
I have one request, Madam Mayor. Just just a quick request from, I don't want to agendize it and talk about it because I think we discuss it to death. But this Bicycle Master Plan, the title of it, is it a master plan? I I like to maybe very briefly brief on it. So is it a master plan? Is it a vision? Is it just an idea? Because my understanding was it was a master plan we approved. We may have differences of opinion. But I think I don't want to discuss it here. I don't want to bring it to the table. I just want to have a memo because we had, when I had a briefing with with staff the other day from the Public Works, and it was yesterday, I believe, and I don't know which project we were talking about, they they pointed to that thing, that plan, said, we, I said, why are you doing this? Why are you doing it this way? They said, because we have a master plan. We have to follow that. So again, it's not for discussion right now or today or next week, but I would like to have a a quick briefing with our Public Works and understand exactly what we what we passed.
So I will just address as part of the motion that was made, one of the things that I asked or the direction that I gave to staff was when they bring it back for an approval, for us to also look at what we're titling it as and possible disclaimers we can put on there for us to be safeguarded. Because again, I, during that time, I addressed that as somebody, if I was an average citizen, I saw a bicycle plan, I would think it's a plan. And if there is no disclaimer, you know, or think so. I mean, staff was supposed to bring something back when they're, with with that stuff in mind, when they, when it comes back.
You can curate it up anyways. That's okay. Thank you.
All right. Okay, we have oral communication next. How many speakers? How many callers?
We have, currently, we have four cards. Oral communications discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. Our first speaker is Areveek Yavramyan.
I've been wanting to come to this meeting for a long time, but I always used to feel shy, but I am here today. I currently live in Glendale, I live in a very well, in a very good apartment building in a very good area.
That, that is also ADA compliant and good for people with disabilities.
And currently, I've become in need of a new living space because I'm living with my husband and his girlfriend. I've applied to multiple places, including Mike Glendale and other agencies, and other agencies, including disability agencies to try and obtain an apartment, however, I have not been successful. And I applied for a, at a women's organization as well, but they haven't been able to help me. I received a notification that my name was pulled from a waitlist on the apartment project on Melford, however, I have not received any further communication in regards to that. And my request from City Hall right now is what, what are you able to assist me with? Are there any programs, any resources available that you can provide to me? Because I'm really in need of that grant because due to my situation, I'm only able to pay using my disability income. And that's the only thing I ask from City Council is, or City Hall is to assist me with the situation. I've presented just a little bit, I didn't want to go into details, but this is all I wanted to present today.
Okay. I think part of what wasn't translated, I'm just going to communicate to Councilmember Brodmann, I think the rest understood, but I don't know if housing staff can get her contact and reach out to her. The part that wasn't was she's with her ex-husband and her current, his current girlfriend, which makes it very difficult for her to live there. Okay. Next item.
Next speaker is Alan Durham.
Mayor Satrian, members of the council, I'm Alan Durham, thank you for letting me speak. Bear with me, I have to go onto a little bit of background in order to get to my question and concern. I'm here to ask a question and get some information about 1239 North Everett Street. If you remember, that was a 1925 Spanish Revival-style home that was a contributor to the pending Bellhurst Historic District, was originally a very small two-bedroom, one-bath house, 1,224 square feet. On April 30th, 2024, the council, you know, heard about the illegal demolition of that home and took several actions. The council passed a motion that an instrument would be recorded with the county imposing covenants that specify a two-year moratorium period during which permit issuance on that property is prohibited. But the council also voted that after the expiration of the two-year moratorium, any construction on that site would have to have the same footprint, height and square footage as that original demolished home, that 1,224-square-foot home. My understanding is the replacement of the house with the similar footprint, square footage and height was not, could not be part of the instrument that was recorded with the county. And my concern is a few days ago, a real estate listing appeared for this property. It's, which is still, I think, pretty much demolished. It's, the list price is $1,198,000 and the listing, I'll quote from the listing, "This property offers a rare chance to build your dream home from the ground up. Some restrictions may apply due to the property being in a pending historic district." The restrictions aren't just because of a historic district, the restrictions on that property are due to the two-year moratorium and the fact that any building thereafter would have to conform to the square footage, footprint and height of the original house. Seems to me that few buyers are going to be satisfied building a 1,224-square-foot home on that property. And my concern is after the two-year moratorium, I think that expires in October '25, what procedures or controls does the city have that would make sure that any permits issued for reconstruction adhere to the council's decision that it would have to restore the footprint, the square footage and the height of the original house? You know, in the past, there have been instances where through some kind of slip-up, bureaucratically, the city has issued permits that were not supposed to be issued or weren't in conformance with what should have been issued. And my fear is a few years down the road, this might happen on this property if somebody pays so much for the lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nate Jakus.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Satrian and council members. My name is Nate Jakus. I am a first-time homeowner and new resident of Glendale's Verdugo Woodlands neighborhood. I'm here to address the recent HPC motion on August 15th, designate the neighborhood as a historic district. I'm a director, entrepreneur and teacher, and before that, a design architect serving greater LA and projects abroad for several years. To be clear, I for one understand why DRB's Design Review Board, for those who don't know, exist, but stand opposed to an overstepping HPC, AKA Historic Preservation Commission, that lacks proper regulation, due process or concern for the overall welfare of those it's meant to serve. Let me unpack why this matters, forgive me, there's a lot to cover, otherwise it'd dress you all by face. Why this matters, I come before you here tonight, as part of my due diligence before buying my family's home, given that mine myself, my wife and my parent, and parents-in-law share a common background in architecture, construction, engineering respectively, I reached out to the city planning department to make certain that the home we were about to purchase, not purchased, is not and would not be part of a historic preservation district, this is only less than two months ago, in the foreseeable future. I was not reass, I was not only reassured of this in speaking with the staff planner, but additional comments were made on their behalf as though the, to clarify, and if in the event anyone were to challenge this, when it comes time for me to file a design permit now or in the distant future, we intend to build a modern home that would likewise, respect DRB's requirements and guidelines and the beauty of the neighborhood, that it should not be deemed a contributor in any way. In fact, they even said, I quote, "Spanish-style-ish, non-contributor." These remarks cannot be understated as it clearly identifies how little, if any, character of it could in any way be deemed worth preservation. I and many other local homeowners who attended the so-called hearing, I'm going to just refer to it as such, on August 15th, found it to be more of a formality, if that, which shocked and offended every last one of us is in there in opposition, was to only then learn behind closed doors at that meeting, that the HPC all by themselves self-elected to remove a checks and balance step that very night, negating the opportunity for the underserved, unheard, and anyone imposed to have their law-given right to petition and for the voice to behold just as much weight as any other person there to make a case for or against. To make matters worse, the HPC also conveniently removed the prior 25% signature requirement from all residents' concerns, which is another checks and balance measure there to ensure taxpayer funds are not spent on expenses that are not representative of the people's desires or collective best use. Furthermore, I was deeply disturbed to bear witness to how little notice or regard was given to BIPOC and other minorities present when taking the podium to state their case against the HP redistricting. Mayor, I know that in reading your PR statement upon being elected this year, you intend to, I quote, "Help foster a government where marginalized voices are heard as any and barriers are torn down." That is what I could gather from the PR statement. It could not see a more obvious example of where this esteemed goal is being challenged and undercut by local officials acting in their best interests instead of prioritizing those who are meant, they are meant to serve. I nor anyone should have to feel compelled to come here tonight to flag such concern, but it seems prudent to state that our fellow community members are entitled to equal rights and representation, excuse me, but the HPC's actions at the present do not reinforce such ethos. As can be seen in the manner of speaking from Jay Platt, the HPC planner and keynote speaker, the pending designation that was accelerated into formal adoption that night was something that he referred to again and again as that were past tense and already adopted, trying only to sway the HPC, but more importantly, presenting a biased, partial view that the pending status was all but inevitable. And to then remove the signature requirement as we were lead to expect to be instituted based on Glendale's recent past handling and other, and rather instead it became the swift adoption, not something by the people for the people. It should be noted that in all prior HP districts, he himself stated, "The average property count had been a mere fraction of the homes involved in this redistricting." Verdugo Woodlands has over 740 homes spanning in all of it, whereas all the other districts are proposed are somewhere, I didn't get the exact number, but I believe I heard from 30 in, say, Neo Jarah Drive to about 100 homes. So it's a much larger order magnitude, an example of how emboldened the HPC has become, whereas instead they might rather practice caution before plowing head without the data to back it up. My ballooning concern is that what I so-called witnessed at the so-called hearing and since then and from hearing from fellow residents, that just in these past two weeks, anyone with active building projects have suffered consequential losses in the form of additional expense, economic hardship and undue setbacks, anyone on the verge of such projects must already adhere to what is simply a pending ordinance as if, as if it were passed.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm going to address this because this is something that speaks to my heart.
Okay.
When this item came to council, I actually tried to up the percentage because I don't think it's fair. I spoke about families that actually invest all of their money in hopes of maybe even one day, not immediately, but even one day remodel and without having their say. This is not an HPC decision, it was the council's decision, I was opposed to it because, just because you read that statement. I have since then, actually, since the last HPC meeting, heard from other residents noting that, I guess it's in lock mode right now because of the HPC hearing that took place and asking what they can do because they are opposed to it and no one had reached out to them. And this was one of the larger issues I brought up when this item was coming up to council and we, we had a discussion on, because again, people that have homes can wake up one morning and they can't do anything to their house. And so I know that there is a group of residents that wanted to start a petition and I, I've requested from our staff for me to get information and just pass it on to you guys on how the process may be. So I can only speak for myself, but it's not the HPC, there was a council vote that took place that changed and what they called streamlined the process. And so it really isn't staff and it's not HPC, it was a policy change that came to this council. I was opposed to it, I will continue to be opposed to it and not because I don't believe in historical landmarks or historical homes, but historical districts are a whole different conversation and the impact it has on our, on our residents and especially when it comes to their economic vitality. So I'm happy to connect with you after the meeting and pass on that information from staff to you as well.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Liz Redley.
I'm here tonight to talk about horse manure. I asked to go last because I felt it belonged here. It's mostly good news, but with a couple of questions at the end. For the record, I am the admin of the Burbank Glendale Griffith Park Equestrians, which is a community group of about 8,000 people, and president of the nonprofit Glendale Rancho Equine Advisory Committee. And the mostly good news is that really it's a big shout-out to Public Works, who you'll recall, we talked back at the council meeting in the rancho, about the fact that horse manure had always gone to the landfill as solid waste and that thanks to Councilmember Devine, who took this forward to Public Works, they were able to work out a deal with the Griffith Park composting facility, which is just a mile from where we are. So each week now, we have the small bins, not the huge ones, but the small bins and the Public Works has them picked up, they drive over there, they dump that, and I brought props. Hey, dried grass, this is what most horses eat, this is 95% of their diet, right? Shavings, which is, I'm afraid we're using these words now, this is what they urinate into. And it turns out that when you combine those two things, the green waste like lawn clippings and water, it's the right pH to become, this of course is included, you know what this is, double-backed for your safety, that it becomes Topgrew Premium Soil Amendment, which is trademarked by the city of Los Angeles and it's sold. So our goal for having Glendale horses, fertilizing Glendale soil, actually works because our city goes and gets this back and uses it, as I understand it, though I've not seen it with my own eyes, uses it on city property. This, I think, is a great thing because we're literally taking it one mile where it gets cha, I mean, it's, it's kind of fun, massive machines, pipes, water spraying, they mature it, and when it's matured, it's literally used to take what is bare ground and turn it into fertile earth that you can grow whatever it is you want to grow. Okay? So the slightly less fabulous thing is it's that for the homeowners, we have been paying for the first two of these smaller bins, we've been paying about $92 for the first two bins to be picked up. It was always that price when it was going to solid waste and we were hoping that when it was no longer solid waste, because it's very heavy, because there's a lot of water content, we were hoping that the price would actually go down. And I watched carefully the study that, I read the study, I watched carefully here, the council meetings where you talked about Proposition 218 and how prices needed to go up, but I don't remember ever seeing anything about horse manure and composting, so we weren't expecting those prices to go up. It's gone up now from basically 93 to $135 to have the first two bins picked up. And so I would hope that, I'm hoping it's a paperwork error, because I believe when the study was done, it might have been in with the solid waste and somehow it just didn't get separated out, it's billed separately, it's picked up separately, it goes to a completely different place. And I'm hoping that, that it's an error that could be fixed because, you know, I have been paying attention when I come here and I sit and I listen about all of this and I think Proposition 218 does require public involvement and I don't think it's permitted for the costs to be billed greater than what it costs the city. So my hope is that this is an error and I'm hoping that, that Mayor and myself could maybe look at some figures and double-check and see what we can do. Thank you. I'll take my props now and I'll leave.
Ms. Redley, I, I did follow up with staff. Ms. Redley, I did follow up with staff. Staff did send some updates to me yesterday. I haven't had a chance to look at them between yesterday and today.
Of course, I haven't taken so long, I know.
But my understanding is it has nothing to do with the trash fees. It has to do with the fee schedule increase. And so we'll look at that document and then I'll send it over to you.
Right, I understand. Because the documentation only says that, what's printed on our bill says that it's solid waste that's going up, but this isn't solid waste. It's going for composting. So as I say, I'm just hoping it's been overlooked and it's a paperwork error, but we need to kind of dig into it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'll be in touch with you in the next day.
Thank you.
We have one caller.
Okay.
And this is the last public comment. The caller is Joseph Cascanyon. Joseph, you're on air. You have five minutes.
Hello, Mayor, very young members of city council. Could everyone hear me?
Go ahead.
I came to a meeting a couple of months ago in regards to electric car charging stations in the city, and I believe then we were talking about expanding our infrastructure for electric car charging stations, and I'm calling in regards to that again. One point I just wanted to bring up is, again, the Harvey In-N-Out parking lot. I don't know if anyone has visited recently, but it is a, you know, it's a big cluster for our city. It's causing a big bottleneck, especially if you're trying to charge your car. It just doesn't really work out. So something that I just wanted to bring up to your attention again, but I urge us to immediately take some sort of action to expand our electric car charging infrastructure. Currently, the city has only four, 40 existing stations, and the demand continues to grow as more EVs are added to our roads daily. Pacific BMW recently came to our Design Review Board meeting stating that in the next few years, 80% of their fleet will be electric cars. This is a rapid shift, and it underscores the urgent need for additional charging stations to support our community's transition to sustainable transportation. There are currently about 70,000 to 80,000 visitors that are coming through Glendale, whether that being tourists, commuters, people that live here, and many of them who are EV drivers looking for a reliable charging option. Pasadena has a strong example by using their own EV stations as a revenue stream, which, you know, promotes environmental responsibility. And I think it's something that the city of Glendale should look into as well. I know that we have currently some electric car stations at City Hall, but I think it's worthwhile to, especially on city property, if there's something that we can look into installing actual charging stations, it's something that our city is desperately in need of. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do I have the motion touched here?
So moved.